...of the Ojai Planning Commission for February 20th, 2019. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Colossi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioners Jagiello.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Lottis.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
And one vacancy.
All right. The Pledge of Allegiance, Ray, could you lead us, please?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the order of business is Public Communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda under state law. Except for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. And if anyone wishes to speak during public communications, please do not be offended if we do not respond to you as you speak. Is there anyone there who wishes to speak on a matter of city business other than those on tonight's agenda?
Yeah, I think I will.
All right. Mr. Daddy?
Hi, Bob Daddy. This is about an item, but not the item itself. We've gone through this year after year after year, and it appears that we have certain things that come up where they're pertinent, they have relevance, and they're not in the staff report. And so, we're about to discuss somebody being involved in one of the decisions, which is going to be our Item Four. And it appears to me that we have an obligation to the community to be transparent and are not in all proceedings. And if we have items and we have government codes that prevail and have different type of meanings and different types of rules that guide who and what can say or be involved in the discussion, I believe it should be in the agenda. I believe that the government code should be cited. I believe it should be public and transparent for everybody to hear, not be brought up at the last minute. And so, we don't do that. And I would hope that from now on, when staff has any kinds of issue, that it would be put in the agenda. Now, I had an issue on the Building Appeal Board where I was told that I had to recuse myself. I didn't. We then shut down the meeting and postponed it. I went to the FPPC, got a ruling, and found out that I didn't have to. We reconvened at a later date the same issue, and I went ahead and I voted on the issue. I think when we come up with those, we have an obligation to include the public, and we're not. Shame on this community for that, for allowing that. And I would hope that this is the last time in a staff report, we don't put something in that report for the public that is that important. Thank you.
Thank you. For those watching at home or others that are uninitiated, I think the topic here is whether or not I recuse myself from Item Four based on the fact that my residence is within 500 feet of the project, the Mallory project, that is tonight's Agenda Item Four. Mr. Summers, would you pick that up?
Certainly. The requirement is that any city official with a financial interest in a decision as defined by statute and the FPPC's regulations, recuse from participating in that decision. The issue here is, I understand it, your residence is within 500 feet of the project at 412 Mallory Way. Therefore, my recommendation is that you recuse from that project. And that can, that does not have to be under any law stated in the agenda nor in a staff report. It is more than sufficient to disclose the matter at the beginning of the public hearing, and in fact, that is what the statute requires, as do the FPPC regulations. They require that the official disclose the conflict and recuse from the discussion at the start of the item. So, you can do so now, as is obvious, or bring it up when Item Four arises.
Okay. As I have been informed, this is a situation different from the one that involved Mr. Daddy on another case in another commission. And as I understand it, it is by FPPC regulation that proximity within 500 feet to a project automatically qualifies as a financial interest, no matter what else goes on. Is that, is that the gist of the regulation?
That's the gist of it, but I'll give you the full, full element. So, the rule is that within 500 feet, and this is for real property that you own or have a financial interest in, of value of greater than 2,000, I'll assume that's met.
Yep.
Then, if the, if the subject of the decision is within that trigger, that 500-foot distance, then you are required to recuse from the decision unless you receive an FPPC opinion stating that you may participate in the decision. Now, that used to be the rule before 2017, when the FPPC rewrote these regulations, that you could enter into kind of an analysis, looking at the issue, looking at the extent of the decision, and decide, "No, no, I can still participate because it won't have any effect at all in any way, shape, or form on the value of my property." That discretion has been deleted. The FPPC rewrote their regulations and took away that power. And now, the only way for an official to participate in a decision within that 500-foot trigger of property they own or have a financial interest in is to get an FPPC opinion stating that it's okay to do so. I don't believe that has been done, so my recommendation is to recuse. And yes, it is different than the prior situation.
I have neither requested nor received such an opinion from the FPPC, and it sounds like the 500-foot part is a pretty bright line.
It is a very bright line now.
Okay. Any other public communications? Seeing none, we'll move on. Our consent item is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, February 6th. Any comments by the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Very good. Any other discussion? Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Jagiello.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Colossi.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
All right. Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have, in fact, three sites that we will be dealing with tonight. 111 North Blanche, the 345 East Ojai Avenue, and 412 West Mallory. West Mallory. Interesting. Mallory runs north and south. At any rate, why don't you start us off, Ray?
I did do site visits at all three sites, and I had no ex parte contacts.
I've had no ex parte contacts, and I have gone by all three sites, somewhat familiar with all of them.
Okay. I likewise have visited all three sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I also visited the three sites and had no ex parte contacts. I have visited or am familiar with the sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I visited, excuse me, I visited all the sites and had no ex parte contact.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. Next is our first public hearing item, number two, sign permit S-18-026, approval of a comprehensive sign program for Warehouse 111, an existing multi-tenant live-work building at 111 North Blanche Street, units A, B, and C. Could we hear from staff, please?
And for the record, I just want to acknowledge Community Development Director Luke Conley is on a conference call here.
Oh, he is? Okay, hi, Luke.
Hello, I am here.
I didn't recognize you.
And if I could say one thing, I have a clarification on the, on the staff report and project that I had just noticed. I think the bottom of Page Two refers to the sign area for the directory sign being nine square feet, when in fact, it's just a little over three and a half square feet. If you look at the plans, it's 3.55 square feet, so it's, it's well under the allowable eight square feet that's shown in the table. I just wanted to clarify that before there's any discussion on this project.
You arrive at that figure by adding up the three tenant signs, not the overall thing on the side of the building, or what?
Actually, I'm just looking at the entire perimeter of the sign. I, I think there was some confusion because on the plan, it does say.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
It, it does say nine square feet, and then it says 3.55, but the overall area is just 16 inches by 32 inches, which comes out to just over three and a half square feet, so.
That's shown on the plans as the directory sign, but are the blade signs really nine square feet?
The blade signs are, in fact, yeah, I believe they're three by three.
Right, okay.
So, the blade signs are at the maximum nine square feet, but the on-building directory sign is well under that. It just, it's just over three and a half square feet.
Got it. Okay. Yes. Yes.
And that was all I had to say.
Okay, that's, that's a typo, if you will, in the staff report, but it's, it's correct in the drawings given to us by the applicant.
Correct.
Correct. The drawings are correct, and even the, the staff report refers to it as 16 by 32, but it concludes that it's nine square feet when in fact, it is not. It's much smaller than that.
Right. Okay. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Is it, Susan, are you doing this, or is Luke?
Yeah, I am.
Great.
So, the staff report was prepared by Alavina Kenya Arroyo, I probably butchered her name. She is our part-time associate planner. The applicant is requesting a sign program because there are three tenants, and the code requires a comprehensive sign program when there are three or more tenants on the site. The plans are Attachment C, as you noted already. There is the summary table on Page Four of the staff report that outlines the municipal code requirements as well as the proposed comprehensive sign program, and then whether or not it conforms. And as noted, the on-building directory sign area is three and a half square feet, eight square feet is allowed. It conforms with PC approval. There are three projecting signs proposed on the building. Those are shown as three by three, or three, nine square feet maximum, one per tenant. All signs are proposed to be non-illuminated. There's an example of the materials proposed that was presented in front of you this evening. The site is not covered by any special design guidelines in this location.
It's not in the VMU?
I believe it's C1.
No, it is VMU.
It is VMU.
It doesn't have guidelines.
It doesn't have guidelines, sorry.
It doesn't have guidelines, okay.
It was staff's determination the comprehensive sign program is in keeping with the sign regulation and achieves a unified architectural statement. The proposed sign program and subsequent sign permits are exempt from further environmental review under Seco Section 15311, which exempts on-premises signs. So, it's staff recommendation to adopt the draft resolution approving the comprehensive sign program as submitted, making the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in Attachment A of the report. And that concludes staff report.
Okay. Any questions for staff? I have one. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
I just had a question on the vinyl. What is staff's thought on the vinyl material for the lettering in terms of, especially in terms of longevity? Do you, do you have any experience, thoughts about that?
I don't have a lot of experience. The applicant may wish to speak to that.
Can I address that?
But the appearance is trying to achieve the routed look without having routing in the metal.
Okay. So, I'll save questions for the applicant, and I'm really interested in the why you would use the vinyl versus routing and.
That's the question for the applicant.
You know, darkened set, so, okay.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to follow up on that. The only place that I see vinyl letters is in the table in the staff report. I don't see anything about vinyl lettering in these three or four pages of drawings that were sent to us by the applicant, unless I missed it somewhere.
It does.
I see aluminum backer, brushed aluminum.
Here, but it doesn't say vinyl.
Matte black tenant graphics. Is that vinyl?
If I could interrupt, there actually is a reference in the small print on the drawings that says brushed aluminum panel that would have vinyl graphics.
Yeah.
If you look on the, like, the right-hand side of the drawings where you have the blade sign in a sectional view, the, the word vinyl is used there for the lettering.
Got it. I, I'd missed that. That's on Attachment C, Page Four. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Without going through the entire town and seeing, is there an opinion on how many other businesses are using vinyl signs? Is there a percentage? Is there any kind of, can you give me any kind of sense from?
Unfortunately, I don't, this is the first sign program that I've seen come through in my eight months here.
You don't know.
Pass that down to Susan. Okay?
I just have one other question. Do you know why the Sign A, wait a minute. Sign A projects out more than the other two, and they're all, I mean, they're all tenant signs, but the Sign A projects further out. I'm just, I don't know why that is.
I, I am not aware why, and I think those questions are better directed to the applicant.
Yeah, I, I think it would be better if the applicant had a chance to present and might answer some of these questions.
Okay. Through with questions for staff? Thank you very much. Let's hear from the applicant then. Please give us your name and address and all that.
Good evening. Sure, thank you. Jeff Becker with the Becker Group, 814 Kenyatta here in Ojai. Our offices are in Ventura, though. Sorry. Good evening. Jeff Becker with the Becker Group. This is used for vinyl. You can look at 530 Ojai Avenue, which had a whole sign program done maybe eight years ago when we remodeled that building.
East or west?
That would be west. It's at the corner of Bristol and Ojai Avenue, two-story office building. There's about 20 signs there that have a similar look with a kind of a rusted metal placard and then a stainless steel sign, and then the vinyl lettering, which is really just replacement, because you have tenants that move in and out, so you can replace it periodically.
So, you have adhesive-backed vinyl, and you just strip it off and put new on?
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. It's a great invention.
This is, this is that, this is the northeast corner of Bristol and Ojai Avenue?
This would be the northeast corner, yeah.
Okay.
Oak trees in front, parking in front.
Yeah. I guess I never looked that closely at the monument sign.
Right next to Suzanne's, former Suzanne's, yeah.
Oh, oh, the former Suzanne's.
There are also binder, there are vinyl letters.
Yeah.
Vinyl letters on the monument sign there as well. So, about the only issue with vinyl letters is if the sun directly hits it, sometimes you have to replace it every couple of years. We use it in a number of locations in Ventura, Santa Barbara, so it's not unusual. It's pretty common, actually, so.
Okay. Could you comment on the, on the tenant sign A versus the other two, please?
The, the signs are all the same size, so maybe it just appears like it juts out more because it's on the corner. The other signs are on the Matilah side. That A sign, I think, is maybe on the corner, and that, maybe that appears different.
So, so they are all equally apart from the building, if you will?
They're the same size. They haven't been made yet, but they would be the same size.
Okay. It's just on the, on the table, it says Sign A projects 54 inches, so that exceeds the allowable by code, although it can be approved by the plant, with a sign program, I guess. And I thought maybe there was, that pillar was recessed or something, but I'm not sure.
I think the pillar may be a little bit recessed on the Blanche Street side, but it may be even with, with that other wall. Where, where did you find this on?
On the, on the, on the comparison, on the summary table. It says Sign A is projecting 54 inches from the building face.
Yeah, I think the issue there could be, it's affected by how far the curb is away. So, while the sign is projecting the same distance off the face of the building, the curb in some cases is either further or closer. So, that, that's what's affecting that difference. It's not that the sign is projecting out any further.
It's a wider sidewalk, maybe, on the Blanche Street side.
It's just the distance of the curb to the building face.
Yeah, there's a, there's a bulb out on Blanche side that was installed.
Yeah, well, this, but I.
But there's a bulb out on the, on the Matilah side as well, not as big.
But this, this figure is supposed to be distance from building face, so that wouldn't, the curb wouldn't matter.
Mr. Chair, if you look at Attachment C, Page Two, it has the installation detail of Sign A. It is showing a six-inch gap from the bracket to the actual 36 by 36 inch. So, overall, from the face of the building, it will be 42 inches.
Okay.
The table is incorrect. It says 54 inches.
Okay. So, the 54 should read 42.
They all should read 42.
And B and C should read 42, not 24.
But the plans are correct. The plans are correct.
Okay.
Okay. That makes me happy.
Right. Every blade sign is the same size and projects the same distance from the building face. They're all 42 inches from the edge of the sign to the face of the wall.
Okay.
Oh, so that, so the table should be changed to 42 for both A, B, and C.
I think where the reference came from is on the Attachment C, there is a line item that says sign clearance from curb.
Right.
Yeah.
And that says 54 inch on Sign A and 24 inch on everything else.
Right. Okay. Huh. Sorry for the interruption there, Mr. Becker.
That's okay.
Is there anything else you'd like to, to add to what you've heard here?
No, I think that's it. The signs, the designs will fit in with the style of the building, which we just finished rehabbing, so, and they're, they're, they're not illuminated, they're pretty low-key. And that's, that's it. This is kind of the wrap-up of the project, so we're looking forward to completing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't have, you don't have tenants to put signs up for yet?
Yes, we do. We actually, two of the units are already occupied.
Oh, great.
And we're working on the third one right now. That's, there's three units, so.
A looks like it's unoccupied.
A is occupied.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay. I walked right by it. I guess they're very subtle in there.
Yeah, I was just in there this weekend. They've got their, their store being set up, so.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes?
Oh, here. Here, Ray, this, oh, no, you do have a solid medal on there, okay. We all have good copies. Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Thank you.
With that, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on Item Two? I have no cards. All right? Then we will open and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for Discussion. Chester?
Okay. Well, I'll just go through the list. It seems like there's four or three really relevant items here that I don't, that need our approval. One is the vinyl letters, and there is a, and I knew there was a precedence of using vinyl letters. I've seen them used before. I just was wondering if someone had done that, you know, quick scan of what those are. And it's a very standard-use material and a very functional-use material for weather and other purposes. So, I'm okay with the, with the vinyl letters. There, the square foot size of the area going from eight square feet to nine square feet, that's a very minimal amount, too. I just don't see any reason to nitpick that as well. And then, the, I guess the, we, we've corrected the, the one to 42 inches, so the protrusion is not an issue anymore. And the only other one is that these, you know, you got nine square feet per sign, not to exceed 10 square feet total, so now you got, that's a little bit of a confusion for me. Is it nine times three compared to the 10? Is that what we're doing?
Or is it nine times three compared to 10 times three?
They are proposing a total of projecting signs of 27 square feet.
True.
Right, that's what I.
And three and a half square feet for the directory sign, so we don't even need to make that special.
Right.
Approval of the area for the on-building directory. And the total of all signs is under the 40 square feet that is allowed by the code.
Oh, okay. So, that's.
So, there's no special exception there. It's really the vinyl that is the main issue.
So, what are we approving under projected sign area, not to exceed 10 square feet? It says yes by PC approval here, and you got nine square foot per sign.
Because we have three or more tenants here, we need a approval of a comprehensive sign program.
Got it. Okay.
But, but they're within the overall total area of signage.
Correct.
Per code.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So, noting all these changes on the table, which is an exhibit to the proposed resolution, we'll amend the overall area of the on-building directory to three and a half square feet. We will note that the Sign A, 54 inches from curb face, and Signs B and C are 24 inches from curb face, not to exceed 42 inches from the building face, so that that exhibit is correct to the resolution.
So, with that said, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Bobby?
I'm fine with it as well. Fine as well.
I, I, my wife and I walk by the building almost every day, and I like it. I like the drawings that I've seen in here. It looks to me like it's going to be just an exemplary redevelopment. Kathy?
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with the sign program and as presented. I just wanted to make sure that, that those little details were attended to, so that's, that's fine. And I am very pleased with what the building is looking like, so I'm assuming that the signs will be in keeping with that same level of quality that you've done the, redone the building with to that level. And I, I guess we don't have any conditions that relate to maintenance of a sign or that it be maintained in good condition or anything like that. I, that's not something we typically do, so.
In other words, if the vinyl.
I mean, we could possibly add a condition. Vinyl lettering should be maintained in good condition and.
Replaced as needed.
And replaced as needed. Perfect.
I like that idea.
That can definitely be added, and perhaps would be a good choice, given that we know both that the applicant is committed to maintain the sign and vinyl can have quality problems if not maintained.
Yeah.
So, I, I think we're fine with adding that condition.
Okay. Ray?
I move to approve. I have no, no challenges with this at all.
Okay. You move to approve as amended?
Yes, as amended.
We have, we have three numbers changing in the table on the conforms on-building directory area. It should just say yes, not yes with PC approval.
Mm-hmm.
And then, we have the added condition, I guess that would be. You wrote it down.
You could make it number five, just so it's.
Yes.
So, it's up there.
Well, that's, well, it's Community Development Department conditions, but that's fine. Add, add a condition five that says the vinyl lettering shall be maintained and replaced as necessary to, to maintain the approved, the.
There's a code that says that in the sign code, to maintain a sign, so we can just use that language.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we don't need that language then.
It's already in code, then.
So, we just have the, the corrections to the table in the resolution, and I presume your motion for approval is with those corrections.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Can we have a roll call, Sherry?
Jagiello.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Colossi.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Powers.
Very, very good-looking.
All right, uh, public hearing item number three, revision to Topa Topa Brewing, conditions of approval numbers three and five related to the construction of public improvements and landscaping changes to replace Boston ivy with native plants for DRP seventeen-eleven, variance seventeen-oh-one, sign permit seventeen-twenty-one, located at three forty-five East Ohio. Could we hear from staff, please?
Yes. So the planning commission, uh, the recommendation, recommendation by staff is that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving replacement of existing landscaping with native plants and amendments to Planning Commission Resolution number seventeen dash twenty to allow for bonding for public improvements. The proposed landscaping changes, um, there is, uh, minor in nature, removing the Boston ivy and replacing it with a more native plant palette. There is a schematic plan in your report as Attachment A. The Ojai redevelopment area statement of theme design guidelines do not speak to landscape criteria, design criteria. Uh, the business is open and operating under a temporary certificate of occupancy, which was granted to allow the applicant to continue to pursue, uh, the Caltrans and city encroachment permits. This TCO is set to expire on March seventh, two thousand nineteen unless further extended by the building official, for which the applicant must submit a request for an extension showing that he is diligently pursuing the necessary permits to complete the public improvements. Um, Attachment B to your staff report is the original PC conditions of approval. Attachment C is the proposed resolution amending, uh, conditions three and five, as well as setting forth a few additional conditions in order to facilitate obtaining the necessary approvals in a timely manner. And also for the maintenance of landscaping to assure that it does not obstruct the public sidewalk. Uh, Mr. Grant provided a memorandum as Attachment D to the report, which, uh, he's here so that he can provide additional input on, um, allowing for bonding and construction of all the public improvements at one time. With that, Mr. Grant?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Yeah, Greg, you wanna add, add to the staff's position on this?
You know, I think primarily just a quick recap is that, uh, yeah, there was condition three of the original DRP that required a, uh, the work be completed, the frontage improvements be completed.
Removing those curb cuts, I think, and making one new one, something like that.
Yeah, removing the curb cuts and putting an ADA ramp and also curb extension.
Right, okay.
Items. So, um, and it said that that work could be completed before certificate of occupancy. It didn't specifically allow for bonding. So those additional conditions that were added to the reso actually provide to allow for the bonding, as well as having some restrictions that there's a quicker turnaround. Uh, it's quite a process when you go through these Caltrans permits. It generally takes a submittal and about three to five months for them to review it. And then it takes about, uh, they require thirty days for a turnaround. So, um, the applicant was working on that last year. They actually worked out a, uh, an original submittal with me. And they submitted it and got the response back in September. And at this point, they have not resubmitted yet. And this, uh, the provisions provided assure that they're diligently pursuing that. It provides for them to have forty-five days to get that resubmitted, including a review and approval with the city in the, in the meanwhile.
When would that forty-five-day clock start?
It would start on the date Caltrans provides the comments.
Okay, but they have provided comments already last September, you said?
Right, and now, so for the initial, they've already got these. They have thirty days to provide comments, uh, as of the approval of this. There is a minor revision required to the reso. Go ahead.
If I could jump in briefly, so as we understand it now, today, the applicant is sitting on comments from Caltrans that I've, they've sat on since September for reasons I'm sure they'll explain. The proposed resolution in, in, um, the new condition three and its subconditions structures this, uh, defined process whereby they would be required to submit a response to those comments and new, uh, adjusted application to Caltrans by March fifth of this year. And then thereafter, Caltrans takes, Caltrans is time.
Whatever time, yeah.
They have thirty days, but enforcement of that is difficult. And then, once the applicant gets a response back from Caltrans, then they have a new forty-five-day clock to then resubmit. And that would continue until approval was received.
Okay.
Because we can't control how long Caltrans takes, but we can control the resumitals in response to Caltrans.
Right. I, I did have one other question. I guess this is probably for Mr. Summers. Are we making, are we making a decision here or are we making a recommendation to City Council?
Decision.
On this one, you are making a decision.
Okay, I mean, it's appealable to City Council, obviously.
Certainly.
But.
It's distinct from the next one, the Malory item where it's a recommendation and then council approval because it was originally approved by council. Here, the original approval was by the planning commission and thus it is a planning commission decision, subject, of course, to appeal.
Yes.
And the last thing in terms of the timeline, and I may be preempting Mr. Grant here, is that the trigger of completing the, the steps, the March fifth deadline and then each forty-five day thereafter, is that if the requirements aren't met, then the temp sevo can be pulled. And that's covered in condition, um, five, which is on page four of Attachment B. Um, it provides that if they fail to, fail to bond, fail to complete any of these requirements, then the city can revoke the design review permit and associate permits or certificates of occupancy. I will caution, however, as is stated in that condition, that due process still applies, meaning it's not automatic. It would be notice in a hearing to do that revocation, but that would be the process. And that would be done with a notice in a hearing at this commission. But certainly I would expect if the conditions aren't complied with and these requirements aren't met, that we, we would be looking at a revocation hearing. That was condition number five on Attachment B, page four.
Okay, you mentioned, you mentioned, um, Attachment D, which is the memo.
Oh, I'm sorry, B, not D.
And, and I didn't see any reference to that in the resolution.
Yeah, those conditions were restated in the resolution.
The conditions are restated in part in condition five. But the timeline, the forty-five-day timeline for response to Caltrans, for example, I did not find in the resolution.
So you'll find that, yeah, in resolution, condition number three? Three C, okay.
Which is on page three. And you'll note, there is.
Sorry.
The, and attachment.
Condition.
Condition number three.
It's page three of six.
C, attach, page three of Attachment B.
Of Attachment B.
Condition number three stretches across a couple of pages.
Wait a minute. Attachment, oh, I'm sorry.
And Attachment B is the.
What is Attachment C then?
Attachment C is the original resolution of approval.
The original resolution, ah.
This is intended.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong one, okay.
No, no worries. For, hopefully for clarity's sake, we structured this to be.
Got it.
A resolution on top of the existing resolution. So that these are new conditions all added because, eh, eh, at least as we look at it now, the issue isn't that those original conditions were, shouldn't have been required. Rather, it's that compliance wasn't met, so now we need to adjust it.
Okay, so, so the situation that we have is that both the city and the applicant are waiting on Caltrans, but Caltrans is waiting on the applicant at this point. And so these additional conditions and requirement for bonding are to ensure that the applicant will carry out or pay for the city to carry out the improvements related to the Caltrans area of influence. Is that right?
I think that's correct, yeah. So to assure that the applicant moves diligently and pursues this, uh, you know, this, this frontage improvement permit with Caltrans.
Okay.
Yeah.
The second piece that's worth mentioning briefly is that it's also intended to solve a bit of a challenge that has arisen, namely that the conditions originally did not provide for the building permit to be issued until these Caltrans improvements were dealt with. That was issued. It happened.
A temporary.
No, building permits were issued along with the temporary certificate of occupancy. Had the.
You're saying the building permits should not have been issued.
That is correct.
Without the Caltrans approval of the changes.
Correct. Unfortunately, that happened. Thus, we're trying to solve it. One way to solve it is to, uh, adjust the conditions to allow bonding to ensure that, looking forward, the applicant will complete the improvements, mindful of the.
Or someone will complete the improvements.
Well, I was just saying.
Whenever Caltrans approves something.
And if, if the applicant doesn't complete them when Caltrans approves them, then the city will do it for the applicant.
By pulling the bond, right.
Paying the price, hence the bond.
Right, okay.
And then that's part of the challenge. We can't undo what happened, but we can try to adjust it going forward.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Oh, um, go ahead.
And I'd like, could I please, please also add, on the resolution proposed, so that'd be page three of six of Attachment B, uh, at the very top of the page, it says the applicant shall complete the following within thirty days of Caltrans encroachment permit approval. That should state within thirty days of, uh, March fifth, two thousand nineteen. And then sec, secondly, uh, okay, I'm sorry.
So April fifth?
Right, okay, or by, I, I guess this was worded a bit weird, right? But it's, uh, we can say by April fifth, it's fine.
Would be April fourth, if it's thirty days.
All right.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. And then similar, oh, well, I, not similar, but on the next page, page four of six, on condition number four, it requires that the applicant complete the frontage improvements within one year of receiving an approved permit from, uh, Caltrans. I'd like to revise that to six months. And those are the two changes I proposed.
Okay. Questions for staff?
I just have one question, Steve. Are, are there any survey marks in the area of the work to be done? Because we're doing a lot of work in the city and the survey marks are just, that have been there for, you know, since the beginning are being removed. And I just, I don't know, but I just, uh.
Any monuments are required by state law. That's a relatively new state law, but they need to be, uh, preserved. It's a law.
Okay, so that would be covered.
We're aggressive on that as far as any kind of overlays or pavements that go on. But that, uh, I appreciate you mentioning that. I don't think, uh, there was any benchmarks in that area, but.
So when we're, this is a sidebar. So when we're paving streets in the city, we will make sure that the survey marks are retained?
Right.
Little brass.
Because we haven't been, we haven't been, they've been.
Uh, for the past two cycles, uh, at least since I've been here, the overlays, they have been. I think previous overlays might have been buried, yeah.
Thanks very much.
No more questions? Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Pleasure to see you all. I thought we were mainly going to be talking about landscaping. So I did print out some pictures of the plants that we're planning to put in. In concert with our friends at the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, they've decided to partner with us in helping improve that front space. So you can pass those around along with the schematic. That was my impression of what we were mainly going to be talking about tonight, to hear some of the things that Mr. Grant's proposing as far as, and alleging that we're not trying to complete the other improvements is, is disappointing, um, to hear. We got responses from Caltrans, which is a, we got them way quicker than we ever had imagined. We were in the throes of just completing what was a rather large project that we feel like improved, uh, a main corner in, in our town that was way over budget and, uh, way over the timelines that we had planned. As a small business, we're still only three and a half years old as a company, so we're not sitting on huge piles of cash, um, trying not to do these improvements. We just simply ask for a fair shake to get them done. We submitted those, uh, the response from Caltrans, the revisions to our engineer, Lewis Engineering. And they unfortunately were really busy because of their workload, because of the fires down in Ventura. So they did not get back to us until after the holiday. Truth be told, we weren't telling them, that we weren't lighting a fire under them to tell them to get it done as fast as possible because we're gonna need to find the money to get this, get this project done. So to hear it all of a sudden shortened to a six-month timeframe, once we do get approval, is, is disheartening because we'll need to figure out how to pay for the project as a growing, small business. So, uh, I would ask for, for you guys to consider putting that out to a year, potentially even longer. We are committed to getting it done. It's going to improve not only our business frontage that we have, but we think it's gonna also improve, um, uh, all the surrounding businesses as well, which, that's been a question for me through this whole entire process, is, is kind of like, why us? Why are we getting singled out to do these types of improvements, um, for the city? Again, we're happy to do them. We're gonna save and we're gonna put the money together to get it done. But there's plenty of other examples of businesses that have come in that haven't been forced to do anything, uh, of the, of this nature. You know, our friends at Majestic Oak, two doors down from us, three doors down from us, didn't have to do anything. They didn't even have to go through a, a, a CUP permit or anything, uh, in order to get their project up and running. We've been dragged through it now, and now we're proposing to even shorten our timeline to complete a project that's, quite frankly, it's gonna be great, it's gonna be beautiful, but it's, it's around eighty, eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars is the bids that we've gotten on this. So to, to force us to do that in a six-month.
To do the street improvements and.
Yes, we're replacing all the sidewalks in front. And, and the engagement that we had with, with staff, um, when they came out to talk about this project was, I mean, they were out there with levels and everything, trying to get it. They wanted us to replace virtually half of downtown's sidewalks. And we had to kind of walk it back because it's just, I don't think that's our job. We're happy to do some of these improvements where we've been working with complete streets to really plan out some great, um, bike racks and stuff. But we asked for some flexibility to allow us to, um, find the time, find the money, um, and go through the process. It's gonna take a while, but, um, you know, it's a big project. It's not, it's a lot of concrete, it's a lot of new curbs, um, there's surveying involved. We have to call surveyor out again because they need to do some stuff with drainage. And they're, they're just doing that work now. So, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm sorry that the engineering company that we hired to, to do it was, was so busy, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of houses being rebuilt down in Ventura. So that's where their time went. I think that's where it should go, uh, until we're ready to get this project going. So I think the improvements that we've made, um, have been great for the downtown corridor. The response we've gotten from the community is, is very, very strong. So it's, again, just, it's disappointing to, um, to have kind of our occupancy, uh, held over our heads on this as a, as a small, growing, thriving business in the town that I just, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's fair. So, um, we appreciate, you know, the time and the consideration for all this and, and we will adhere to whatever conditions we need to, but they need to be fair. And we will appeal them if they aren't fair. Because I, I just don't think, um, shortening up timeframes on us when other businesses, one, didn't have to do it or other businesses just walked away from them entirely from some of these street improvements, which I understand is what we're trying to avoid here. But, you know, you gotta treat everybody the same. It's not, it's not fair for us to have to kind of bear the burden of this entire thing. So, um, again, we like the project. We think it's gonna be a great improvement for our business and for the surrounding businesses. If there was a way that we could share in the cost with everyone, that would be wonderful because, you know, we installed our own bike rack and it's full, uh, from, you know, it's full before we even opened our doors. So it's not our customers even using it yet. You know, we're the ones who paid for that improvement. I think that's gonna continue with this improvement. Topa Topa's gonna pay for it, but the whole town's gonna benefit for it, which conceptually we're okay with, but it's, it's a, it's a big burden to, to put on one business instead of, um, sharing it with all of them.
Questions, Kathy?
Well, I'll start with something a little lighter.
Yes.
And that's the landscape.
Right, that's what I thought we were here to talk about.
Um, and then we can go back to the, to the improvement. Well, first of all, I, I love all the native plants, but I'm, I am going to make a couple comments. And I think that there's a couple species on here that you should eliminate.
Okay.
Not because they're not beautiful and wonderful plants, it's mostly because of the size.
Sure.
And I know your planter is very small and I'm just thinking about maintenance and not to block your wall or the view into your outdoor patio dining area, which I noticed is very successful. So I, and I, you know, I'll let my fellow commissioners respond, but I would like to strike and say to delete the black sage, um, the Galvezia, the California buckwheat and the carpentry of California go, only because of size. And then to fill in the void, you could repeat some of the other items that you have there.
Yeah, we're, we're wide open. We literally just kind of handed it off to our friends at the Land Conservancy and said, what are some good plants?
Right.
To, to put in there, because obviously what went in there before didn't work.
And they are good plants.
Yeah.
It's only, really only the size issue and, um, and I know you don't wanna have to be out there pruning all the time and they don't always look that great when you prune the natives in.
Our plan is to have everything below the, um, the wall line.
Exactly, that's what I thought, so, um, and if we need to, if I need to add that later during the, uh, final approval or direction we go in, I will. And then I guess if we go back to the, um, street condition, um, may I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
Okay, um, so my question is, and then this has to do with any commercial project. If the, the public right-of-way in front of a, a commercial project, a new project. right-of-way in front of a commercial project, a new project, isn't complete, in other words, there's not a sidewalk, curb, and gutter, I believe it's the requirement of the property owner to install that, is that correct?
It's a two-part question. There first has to be a nexus, and the, I don't wanna use exaction, but that's what it is, has to be roughly proportional to the overall valuation of the project.
Right, okay.
So, in many TIs where they aren't asking for any special approvals, we do not require public improvements. In this case, there was a variance, so there was...
That's right.
A special benefit.
With the parking?
So, yeah, this is one of those...
That's what I thought.
Proportional exactions.
Okay, good, I just wanted to...
This is a reminder, too, that, for instance, I think the Becker Group's here now, that 111 North Blanche was just discussed, right? If you look at out front, that's got ADA ramps, it's got curb extensions out front. Think it looks great.
Yeah, you did a really good job.
It's a nice improvement out there.
Including the bile sweep.
I think you talked about Caravan Outpost was kind of a proportional development as well, and that's, that was all curb gutter sidewalk out in front of that development as well. So, it's, it's proportional, like you're saying, it is a nexus, but some of them might not have that trigger.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would just like to make a comment also. I wasn't on the commission at the time, but you were given a substantial, what should I say?
Waiver?
Waiver, thank you. Of, I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on parking.
Hundred and eighteen thousand, yeah.
And that was completely waived, and you would otherwise have been, should have paid that, and I think there's been a substantial noticeable impact on parking since you have opened. You've been allowed to open under a temporary use permit. You have been given a lot on the part of the city and the decision-makers, from my point of view, and I do think that you are generating a lot of impact, and I think you're lucky to be where you are. It's a, it's a wonderful location, and you're doing a fantastic job, and I like what you're doing, but I don't really like to see what you're, you know, trying to exhort from the city staff about this. I mean, you're in business, you've been allowed to open, and so I really think that you need to step up to the plate and do what you're supposed to do, and also, the fact that you were given a huge waiver on parking, I, I feel like rather than receiving donated plants from the OVLC, I would much prefer a very nice donation from your corporation or your company to OVLC.
We gave them eighteen thousand dollars last year.
Okay.
So, we, and the plan is to do a planting party and have kind of them be featured, and that's, it's about them, it's not about us. We're not, we're not gardeners, so that's not what we do. So, that, that is the plan. I, I...
I'm talking about giving back to the community, is what I'm talking about.
We...
Thank you.
I could provide you a list of the amount of donations we give back to the community. It's significant, and we appreciate the parking waiver. I think it was a complex issue, and it was a, I think, I personally believe everyone came to the right decision, because otherwise you'd have businesses just stuck in, they would have to remain to dry cleaner for the rest of time. So, we hope, and we understand that, and again, we're not asking to not do the work. We're just asking for some leniency. If we had had to pay the hundred and eighteen thousand dollar parking fee, most likely we would not have done business here. So, that's, that was sort of, you know, there's, there's dollars that make sense on these improvements. It was a big project, it was an expensive project, and, you know, we had limited sources of funds to do it. So, again, we don't, we want to do the project, it's more of just, we want a runway to be able to plan it and to finance it because it's, it's, it's not cheap. It's about, it's about the same cost. It's gonna end up costing us about the same in engineering fees and everything as our parking waiver. So, you know, that's, was a win one day, it's just, we're gonna end up paying for it anyway. So, again, it's not that we don't wanna do it, it's just we want some leniency and to get it done properly. You know, there's a lot of engineering and stuff that goes on with all of this, that those are kind of hidden costs, aside from just the hard costs of concrete and closing down traffic and traffic studies and all those things. There's, there's a bit more to it, it's a bit more involved than we thought.
Okay. Ray, you had a question?
Actually, it was a question for Commissioner Nolan on a lighter note. Given your landscape, architect, if you were to remove those three plants, do you have three suggestions or two or one that would replace them, that would be of a smaller stature?
Well, I think, you know, I think the, the rest of the pallet's fine, and they could just duplicate or repeat.
Okay.
Some of the smaller ones.
Yeah.
I mean, even, even the Artemisia, or the Artemisia, the David's Choice gets a little wide, you may have to cut that back, but I think it'll, you know, it's two to three feet, and I know you're, the width varies out there. I'm just trying to save you maintenance, so...
Go ahead, Chester.
When he pulls the bond, the, does the owner pay for the bond? Does the city pull the bond, or does the owner pull the bond?
The owner has to provide the bond in a format acceptable to the city with a bond agreement as well.
Right, and you're aware of that, and you're aware there's a cost to the bond?
Yeah, I've been asking for city staff to guide us on exactly what we need to do to obtain our final sign-off for a few months now, documented over emails, and just have not gotten a response. So, it's not that we're not trying to do the work, again...
No, I understand, I'm just getting to a point where, well, where I'm going with this is that, well, the bond ensures the project's going to be done.
Right.
Okay, and so to me, that's an important point, and if the property owner is willing to put out that bond and to pay for that, we're guaranteed that that project will get done. And so now, it's a question to me, I'm defining it to the, what's, what's really, what we really need to decide here, and it's a time factor here. If anyone here has ever dealt with Caltrans, which I have, you would know that it is a formidable process. Right, Greg? I mean, if you, until you've done it, you, you just cannot put enough emphasis on how much effort that takes to do.
Greg's been going round and round on the ATP for two years, three years now?
So, it's easy to just slam somebody for, you know, those kinds of conditions, but they're real. I've dealt with a lot of the homes, the fires that were, destroyed homes in Ventura, and a lot of the engineering resources have been diverted. It's hell to get an engineer to do anything on your project. Ask any contractor. So, some of the, some of the things that they're talking about are very legitimate, you know, as far as time, time-consuming elements. And there's the, the cost factor. So, personally, the bond, to me, guarantees the job to be done. I think, to me, it all comes down to this time factor or this amendment that Greg proposed going from one year to six months, so...
That and the, and the completion of the administrative response to Caltrans, I think.
Well, to me, that, that's the easier part, because you can respond to them, having them respond to you is, is another story, but that is where we're gonna give leniency because they, we have no, they have no control over that.
Of course.
But they got control over moving forward with it.
That's why the, the conditions here are not predicated on any particular response from Caltrans.
Exactly.
It's only the response at this end.
And I, and I agree with that amendment, there's no problem with that. So, really, it comes down to that timeframe.
There can be some challenges with engineering workloads, which is what we ran into with Lewis Engineering here, you know, they have other higher priority projects. It, she just didn't get back to us for, for a while, and quite frankly, we have a lot going on. I probably wasn't bugging her as, as much as I should have been, but, yeah, forty-five days, they should be able to respond to any revisions in that timeframe. I think that's, that's fair.
You can light a fire underneath them.
Yeah.
Because once they know what you're dealing with as well, a lot of times it's telling the story and communicating it to your, your team.
Yeah.
And then they know that they have the same, same issue. I mean, it sounds like you were kinda under anticipating what this was going to, not only cost, but take to do, you know, take to do as far as engineering goes.
We had the bids before, I mean, we, we knew what it was gonna cost, it just came right at a time when we were pushing to get open, so it just wasn't our top priority at that point. We said we're gonna have a lot of time to get this done. We knew Caltrans wasn't, our original goal was to try and get Caltrans to approve it so we could do it all in one fell swoop. The concrete work, work like that, the main cost is mobilizing the troops to get out there, so we were doing a bunch of concrete work anyway on our patio, so we were hoping for the stars align, that obviously didn't happen, so, yeah. But bonding the project would ensure that we get it done.
Right, so now, so now I'm coming to the point of the six months versus a year, and that's where I wanna bring it back to you, Greg. What, why the six months and why not the year? Give, give me some more feedback on why you think we should accelerate that.
Okay, just to clarify, right, we're talking that every time there's a smittle, Caltrans will take whatever it is, three to five months to do the review, so that's not anything we control here and don't mention. But once the applicant receives the comments, to assure they diligently respond, and I think there was a question about the September recent, you know, receiving comments five months later, there's been nothing done, so that would be called diligence. So, we wanna assure that they respond within forty-five days. I think I've already attached the plans here, and they're already substantially done, they're really down to minor details, so there is hope that you get a permit in the next cycle or two, but it can be, it goes through six different groups at Caltrans, it may not happen. So, once, they'll see it coming, they're gonna see that this thing is nailed down, and it's likely we're gonna get that permit soon. So, the point is, once they receive it, that the same thing, they, they've got a permit in hand, that they diligently moved to secure a contractor and get the work done. So, there's a good chance it's gonna take some time, and I should highlight, the condition does allow myself, the Public Works Director, to extend that timeframe if there's good reason.
Okay.
So, there's still room in there, but we just, once you get the permit, six months should be enough time. It's not a highly complex amount of work, it's just some curb and sidewalk, it's flat work, but you'll have to, I will still get your bids, however you handle your contract work, and, but at that point, your complete, Caltrans is rated role, they, you know, you, you don't need any further approvals from Caltrans, so it should be quick.
Apart from compliant, go, go ahead.
One of, one of the reasons, in addition, why I would ask for a bit more flexibility aside from the six months, is that we're actually gonna be tearing out all of the sidewalks surrounding our business as well for, and, you know, those jobs don't happen in like just one day, it's probably gonna be a few days, so we would like to try and pick a time where it doesn't impact our business or an impact the town. So, having a little bit more leeway, if we're not in spring and summertime, which are probably gonna be our busiest times, we could plan it and schedule the time far in advance to figure out, do it on like a Monday or Tuesday or some off times where we can get it, get it done. So, a little bit more runway, I think is perfectly, perfectly reasonable to ask for, especially doing a project of this size for the downtown corridor, because again, Ojai Pizza's gonna benefit from this, Ojai Coffee Roasting's gonna benefit from it, our neighbors are moving in across the street are gonna benefit from it. None of these businesses had to do anything of this. Majestic Oak is gonna benefit from this. The Nest is gonna benefit from this. So, that's why I think it's a, it's a project of decent impact, so let's take our time, let's let us plan and get it done, and do it at the right time for our business since we're shouldering the entire load of the project.
Just to recap the timing, I think you'd be, it's possible you receive a permit and it's six months, but it might take a year, could be more, so, and then you add six months onto that.
Easily.
So, it's a good chance that it's another year to a year and a half before you see completion of this construction. I think with that flexibility...
Right, exactly. Are you aware of that? I mean, because that, that to me is built into the, into dealing with Caltrans.
But it's, it's something that we can't control. The, Caltrans could turn around and give, give us our approval tomorrow, and then I have six months to get it done.
Well, you have...
I don't believe that's fair.
Well, you have, there's other discretion. Greg is saying that, you know, and I've worked with Public Works as well, and, you know, you go down there and it's, it's a professional but casual environment, and you can tell them your situation, and, and I'm sure, he's been very workable in the past on all projects I've, I've seen. Have you had a different experience?
I, I think this entire process would be a different, an opposite experience from that. We understand what we have to do and what, what's in front of us here, but, yeah, it's the entire process of us replacing an entire street frontage, adding, you know, two bulbous, three bulbous, four bike racks, trees, landscaping...
That was a requirement for the, for the permit?
It doesn't seem to me to be equitable as compared to other projects that I've seen happen in town.
Right, but now you're after the fact trying to make a case for something that you agreed to, so that doesn't hold a lot of...
We're, we're not saying, we're not trying not to do it. I think I've been abundantly clear about that this evening. We just want a fair timeline to be able to do it. It's, it's an expensive project. If I had, if I had the money right now put away to do it, we would do it tomorrow if we had the approval. So, I think twelve months, which what was the original condition, is perfectly reasonable and fair. I know other businesses had up to five years to complete these types of things. Again, we're asking for fairness, we're asking for, you know, just a, a clear look at what, at what's in front of us here, and, you know, to all of a sudden, kind of arbitrarily shorten it down to six months just because that's what we, that does not seem fair to me, and that, that's, that's what I would, that's what I'm arguing here tonight, because I don't, I don't think that's the right course of action for, for the, the group to take. So, I understand it might be a lot longer than that, but, and we might get it, we might get it done a lot quicker than that, and that, that's, that would be the goal for everybody involved, but again, having some flexibility for us to be able to choose the time for when we're gonna do that instead of being forced to do it is, is, that would be in our, in our best interest.
I got one more question for Greg, because...
Please, go ahead.
It's, it's, this is, to me, the key, the key issue here. From your perspective, what's the, what's the disadvantage of keeping it at one year?
I think the original intention of the DRP was to have the work completed before an occupancy permit. So, at this point, we're trying to assure that the applicant is diligent, so they've already got, you know, some indications it wasn't being very diligent, so it's to assure it's diligent and it handles, so we're still looking a long time, like, I think, was already brought up by Commissioner a lot, is that there's, you know, it's not happening before occupancy, it's gonna be lucky to happen within a year or two of occupancy permit.
Okay.
And, and I think also there's, as you mentioned, there's, there's flexibility in there, so I think it's a good point he's bringing up that, you know, it might be difficult depending on how you stage the construction up front, you're gonna wanna get it done quickly.
Sure.
And there's a lot of ways to skin that, but, you know, so we'll, we'll be glad to...
Especially in the location that it's in.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I vetted that out.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant or comments? Okay, I have a couple. First of all, just for a full disclosure here, I spent the better part of forty years dealing with the federal government as a contractor, and if I had a contract that said I had to respond within a given amount of time, and I realized that I could not, then if I didn't write a letter to the government and say, "I cannot meet that timeline and here's why," I would be in deep doo-doo as a contractor. And I think, as we move forward here, first of all, do you have a problem with responding by April 4th to the current stuff?
It shouldn't be a problem. Again, we're working with Lewis Engineering, they, they're sending a surveyor out, he needs to do some additional survey work. We've already had him out a couple times, but he's gotta come out and do some, some additional things, so I don't believe that that should be a problem for their timeline, and I'll make sure they get it done, yeah.
Okay. Do you have a problem with the forty-five, with the forty-five-day timeline on any subsequent cycles?
No, no, not at all.
Okay. Can you commit here as a part of this hearing that if you do have a problem, you will let someone know, not just let it hang for months?
Sure, yeah. If you'd like, if you'd like to tell me specifically who to let know, then that might help me, because just letting someone...
Well, if you're, if you are having trouble responding to Caltrans within the forty-five days that are specified by Mr. Grant, then you should notify Mr. Grant.
Absolutely.
And I know him over several years to be an eminently reasonable person. If there's good cause, then there's flexibility there.
Sure.
But you need to keep your end up.
Yep.
As far as the cost of the project, you have the, in my opinion, you have the advantages and disadvantages of having a corner parcel. the, in my opinion, you have the advantages and disadvantages of having a corner parcel. You don't see a lot of ADA ramps or curb bulbous in the middle of a block. And that's why by and large, people in the middle of a block don't have to do the things that you're doing. But a corner lot is typically seen as an advantage to the parcel owner, particularly if it's a retail business. And so you get, you get the good of being on the corner, you get the bad of having to do these things that wind up making the corner what in the city's opinion now it should be. So that's about all I have to say. Anything else? Any, oh.
There are others?
Yeah, we have, any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And we'll open the public hearing. And I have a card from Mr. Wirick.
Here is an individual with a couple of questions to clarify things.
I didn't say.
Yeah, I understand. Just wanted to make sure. Just a couple of facts that I want to be clear on. You know, the original condition as stated by Mr. Summers was for the two departments to ensure that the plans were approved and encroachment permit in place prior to issuing the building permit. In other words, what was clearly contemplated was for all, all this consideration to be done at the front end and for the work to be done while they were already, you know, in construction rather than having to do it after the fact. I think that's clearly what the conditions of approval contemplated. So we're already at sixteen months since the original conditions of approval were, were, were delivered. And this, all this was supposed to happen, at least to the point of having the encroachment permit issued, prior to the building permit being issued in the first place. That was what was originally contemplated. In condition five, I do have a question for Mr. Grant. It says existing two driveway, because I think the original conditions are still relevant. And I, you may have to, I may have to indulge with a little extra time, Mr. Chair. The existing two driveway cuts along Montgomery Street and one on Ojai Avenue be removed. I think that's probably not correct. I believe, looking at the plans, it's not three, three driveway cuts. It's two driveway cuts and one handicap ramp cut based on the plans that I'm looking at for demolition.
Yeah, there are three, three total curb cuts, but there's.
Yeah, not three driveway cuts.
Two to come, two to come out and one to go in.
Right. The, the condition number five indicates three driveway cuts. And I believe the correct would be two driveway and one handicap ramp.
Right, that's right.
Just to be clear.
That's right.
That that should be clarified and corrected. Because when you first read this, you're thinking about that driveway cut in front of decor, which is not the case, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And second of all.
That's, that's in condition five of the original resolution.
Which, which carryover?
Page five of nine, attachment C.
It's now nine?
It's a page five of nine, attachment C.
Oh, page five of nine, yes. I see it in the original resolution.
Yeah.
And.
Yes, and I just wanted to be, make sure we were correct on that.
Yes, that can be adjusted tonight to, to correctly describe the three curb cuts at issue.
Yeah, to be clear. Because we always know what happens when we're not clear. And time passes. Okay. And, and again, I just wanted to point out that the whole thing was structured, that this scope of work associated with this encroachment permit in the original conditions of approval were to be completed before any certificate of occupancy was, was, was issued. So there's a considerable leeway being, being offered here, which I don't disagree with. But, you know, I just wanted to point that out. And I also wanted to make sure we were clear about exactly what the scope of work was on the cuts. So we clarified that. Mr. Grant, I have another question for you. On the crosswalk that is adjacent to this work, which is in front of Pizza, going across to the, are you, are we planning, we're going to, I assume going to be requiring, as part of the current standards, the truncated domes will be required in terms of the new ramp being put in across Montgomery?
Actually, the proposed improvements, and they are attached to this, are that they handle the corner ADA ramp, but they don't handle the one in front of the coffee roaster.
No, I understand that. But I'm saying, the one that they're being required to handle would include the truncated domes.
Yes, right.
Are we looking at it, asking maybe counsel to approve a budget for also putting in the truncated domes at the crosswalk across Ojai Avenue?
That was.
Because ADA people tell me it's very awkward to have a same vicinity, one with truncated domes and one not. And it would be more responsible for us to step up and, and do that. Have you thought about that?
You know, the ATP project has got money allocated for that.
Oh, for that? Okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay. And I appreciate your indulgence on the time, Chair. I'm almost done. The other question I have is that on page two of four in the discussion, it says it's recommended that the applicant respond to any corrections or comments within forty days of each required submittal. Is it, is it required or recommended in the resolution that they have to respond within forty-five days?
It is recommended by staff in the report. It is required in the resolution.
Okay, I was a little, okay, thank you. All right. And then the, the last question I have is the page three or four discussion, that the building official could grant a final certificate of occupancy following the Public Works Director's acceptance of a bond for all public improvements. I assume that, would that be conditional on having an, an approved plan, having the, that's been accepted by Caltrans, and then, then we know how much it's going to cost, and then you make sure the bond is funded, and then you provide the occupancy only after you got the financial responsibility clearly defined on the basis of an approved encroachment permit?
It's my understanding you pull the bond at the time you get the permit from Caltrans.
Exactly.
They require, and they require a value to be established.
Exactly.
On that project.
Right.
And that establishes the value of the bond.
Right. So it would have.
Keep in mind, there's a separate bond requirement here for, to be placed with the city before that is to be placed immediately.
I understand, but in terms of granting the.
Got you. You're talking about the contractor's bond to, to get the.
Right, that's separate.
The, pull the permit.
My, my point is on granting the final occupancy certificate, you want to make sure the bond is appropriately funded, which you cannot appropriately define until you've got an approved encroachment permit from Caltrans.
Right.
Is that line of reasoning?
The cost estimate, right.
Okay, you see what I'm saying?
And I think that's where, at this point, we've rounded up. We feel using a hundred thousand dollar amount.
No, I'm not talking about speculation. I'm talking, when you get the encroachment permit, then you know.
Yeah.
Right?
They've already gone through one round of permit comments, and it appears that we have a good idea what the requirements will be.
I'm just making the point that, that you really can't completely be sure of calibrating the amount of the bond until the encroachment permit is issued.
Absolutely.
And that ought to be considered. Thank you.
We have an additional public speaker, Mr. Daddy.
Planting requirements. We did a reconnaissance the other day and we did it with a person that had no sight and a seeing eye dog. And we ran into, and I recorded them, forty-seven different impediments. Living things grow.
Find that many along the west side of Park Road.
Well, we find it everywhere. We find it at the corner of B of A where the bushes get too high, in Correo, we find it, on Valley Rio, we find it everywhere. I would ask that we no longer allow under any condition, any more vegetation where we have commercial. It grows. It's a problem. We have problems. It's limited space. There's a lot of traffic. If the vegetation's going to be on the other side of the wall, I don't have a problem. If it's going to be between the wall and the street, I would request that they not be allowed to put any vegetation in there. It's just not necessary. It becomes a hazard. We've got tree limbs that Kathy couldn't get under. We've got, we've got growing stuff. We've got encroachment. We, we just have everything. And it appears that we no longer need that vegetation. It really doesn't serve. It's kind of old think. We have a number of places that don't have vegetation right up against the wall and don't have vegetation right on the side of the building. They just don't have vegetation. They're attractive. They look well. They've been done well. And there are projects that have been done here in the last ten years. The, the corner of Blanche Street, the Keller Williams building over there, a number of items where we have a setback from the vegetation. I just don't want to see sidewalk to the front have vegetation. It just doesn't serve a good purpose. I really think you need to rethink that thing. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? I'm going to close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the Commission. As I see it right now, with, with the recommended resolution and, and accounting for Mr. Daddy's comments here about vegetation, I think we have three issues that we need to decide on before, oh, and, revision of the original resolution. I see we have four issues. One is making a revision to the original resolution since those conditions carry over. Second is substituting April 4th or thirty, within thirty days of March 5th in condition three B. We have six months versus twelve months in condition four. And then the question of the vegetation by the wall. Looking at this diagram, it looks to me like all of the vegetation is between the wall and the sidewalk.
It is.
Is that correct? Okay. And Commissioner Nolan has already recommended that there be some changes to the landscaping. Is it in, is it your opinion that with those changes, the vegetation will be no taller than the wall?
Yes, most likely no taller than the wall. I mean, I, you know, looked at all the heights.
Everything has to be trimmed, I'm sure.
Right. And, you know, Mr. Daddy had brought up a good point. I'm thinking if you look across the street where the Nest is, they're not maintaining their planting at all. So that can be an issue. But I don't know if we need to write it into the conditions or if that's just a standard that the landscape will be maintained.
Is there, is, for staff, is there something in, in the code right now regarding the landscape ordinance that requires, what I'm thinking of is.
Maintenance.
Words to the effect that the landscaping not extend above the existing hardscape wall.
Well, and be maintained is.
And be maintained so as not to further impede sightlines.
So currently in attachment B, page two of six, condition number two says all landscaping shall be trimmed and maintained to prevent obstruction of the public right of way. We could also add and sight distance triangles. Then it's a condition of approval that is enforceable, whether or not it's in the ordinance or not.
The existing fences, hedges and walls, collection of ordinances.
Right.
Also require.
Yeah.
No hedges exceeding three feet in height in the twenty-five, the triangle with twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet in the hypotenuse on intersections, which would apply to a portion of the wall, of the planting along the walls here. I don't think they're proposing anything above three feet. That's already required. But certainly there's no harm in adding that further condition here that they just stick it, trim it to the top of the wall.
Right. And like I said, I went through all the plant material and basically it's going to be for the most part below the wall at maturity. I mean, you might get a stray flower here and there, but for the most part it'll be.
Yeah, the words, the words that we have right now to prevent the obstruction of the public right of way, sounds more like encroachment on the sidewalk than encroachment on sightlines for drivers.
And I'm suggesting you could amend that to also include and not to exceed the height of the existing wall so as not to impede visibility in the site triangles.
Yeah, okay.
Can I mention, I want to point out that the line of sight shouldn't really be an issue there. You're going to pull up and you're going to have your line of sight parallel to curbs. You're going to have line of sight there. That's a pretty wide sidewalk, six foot back. It shouldn't be an issue. So.
But it's going to be extended anyway with the, the ramp.
Yeah.
And what have you. Should be fine, yeah.
The car should be able to pull up to the, you know, parallel to the.
The stop line on Montgomery.
Nose out in the parking area for a good line of sight. So that vegetation's far enough. It shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
So with respect to that, let it grow a little higher if it's aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. What's, what's the sense of the Commission? We leave the vegetation alone or put a height requirement on it or?
I was going to say, if we follow through what my original suggestion was to eliminate, there were four species that normally do get well over three feet and additionally get wide, would go beyond the plant. So if we strike those, the ones that are left, generally are going to be below the wall height. It's just, and then, I mean, in addition to just sight, there's just regular maintenance as far as aesthetic goes. We just want to make sure that happens because like I mentioned.
It doesn't happen everywhere. We have a code.
It doesn't happen everywhere. Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, I don't know if we need to write anything for that.
I agree with Commissioner Nolan on this. I, I hear what Mr. Daddy is saying about obstructions and, and people with some sort of disabilities, having challenges through some of our sidewalk areas. But a whole nother layer, which we don't talk about often, is, is the mental health and well-being that occurs when you have vegetation around. As human beings, there's that connection with nature that we have when there's vegetation, which is one of the reasons in urban area, there's often a lot more stress because there's so much cement. So if we can do wise landscaping, and which it sounds like we're doing here, I'm all for it.
Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, I agree. I, I appreciate Commissioner Nolan coming up with a revised plant list. And really, it's, it's softening the wall, which was a part of the project. So I see it as, as related to the project and something that's visually enhancing the whole thing. And I think I actually might, maybe it's not necessary, but on that condition number two, maybe we should add something about the landscaping should be trimmed and maintained and regularly watered because they are watering by hand. So, I don't know. Maybe maintenance takes care of it, but not sure. So. And otherwise, I'm fine with the, the revisions Commissioner Quilisi talked about. And were we, was Commissioner Yegel Yellow suggesting that we do a bond?
We are.
There's a requirement in the resolution for a bond.
Oh, okay. But where they have a choice of a bond or a deposit, are you suggesting that the bond is preferable?
Yeah, the bond makes total sense. Yeah.
So don't give them a choice?
Yeah.
Keep it as an option?
Yeah.
Can we give them the option?
Okay.
The present ordinance does give them the option, but based on the commentary tonight, I expect we won't be receiving a hundred thousand dollar deposit. Instead, they'll probably do a bond.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I do want to speak to the reduction from twelve months to, to six months. It seems like there's so much ambiguity in terms of when Caltrans would happen, when all this would come together and all the approvals are given. And, and what I'm hearing from Mr. Grant and Commissioner Jack Yello, that it's probably not going to happen for a year and a half or two anyway. So the, the six months to one year seems like a semantics thing. And if it's going to give a sense of peace to the applicant, let's just keep it at a year. I don't see the point in reducing it to six months.
I think the key issue there is the forty-five days of response and, and the bond. You get those two things and require that, you've achieved most of what we want to achieve. The fact that the project is going to get done. And the response time, and I had a question on the response time. How are you monitoring that forty-five days?
There's some conditions in there that state.
There are conditions in the reso that state they notify us when they receive the comments, provide a copy to us. And then they also respond to the comments in meeting with us that both the Community Development and the Public Works Department agree on, which has already happened. I mean, I think that ninety percent of it is already incorporated. They're doing some finer details right now. So I don't think that forty-five days should be an excessive. I was actually originally promoting thirty, and I think I was convinced forty-five is a little better.
Yeah. So that's reasonable. So we have a forty-five day response time. That's a very reasonable timeframe. You've got Caltrans that's going to do what they want to do no matter what anybody in here says. And that's going to take how, how much time that's going to take. So we've, we've regulated the response time to accelerate the project. We have a bond that ensures that the project will be done in a certain time. And I, I, again, I don't see any benefit in either reducing it or adding to it. Because I, I think it's going to take, knowing how to deal with Caltrans, it's going to take well over six months anyway.
The, the six months or a year has nothing to do with Caltrans.
Oh, yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't.
This is only response after Caltrans issues final cases.
You got it. Well, right, exactly. That's the, that's the point. The Caltrans process usually is a six-month process anyway. And then you've got six months on top of that. So you have your year.
No, you, you don't really have the year because the, the Caltrans part of the process, you're standing still.
That's what I'm saying. But they're not counting that time. That's not, that's not against the.
We're saying six months from an approved Caltrans permit, which is going to have to go through these cycles.
Whenever Caltrans gets done, it's either six months or a year.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that I, Caltrans will take.
Okay.
At least five to six months to go through that process. So what we're saying is that even though if we reduce it to six months, the process itself is going to take at least a year anyway. Six months for Caltrans to do its thing and six months to, to actually do the construction. So we're back to that one year, most likely. So the question is if we extend, if we keep it at twelve months, we're just extending the construction time past Caltrans approval.
Could I clarify something there? I think there's a little confusion on that, that once the permit is issued by Caltrans, the condition we're discussing at six months or a year.
That's when the clock starts.
Is how long it takes to complete construction.
Got it. No, I understand.
So, yeah, it might take six months or a year to get that permit. And then it's how long does the applicant get to finish the construction after that?
Yes, Bobby. Yes, Bobby.
In my opinion, I think we've asked them for a bond so that we know that this project's gonna get done. They don't really know when the approval will come in. So one of Jack's points was that they would like to pick an appropriate time of year perhaps to do this project, and perhaps that will take more than six months. Given that there's nothing hazardous about leaving it the way it is, I don't have a problem with giving him a little bit more flexibility.
Okay. I would recommend that rather than having an overall comprehensive motion to approve first the change to the original Resolution seventeen dash twenty and separately, I guess, right, separately to the current resolution, I'd like to at least get...
It could all be done as one.
It could all be done as one, okay. But there are, there are four or five different aspects to it. And I'd like to at least get this, get an informal straw poll of the commission on each of these questions. Then we can go ahead and make a comprehensive resolution or a motion to approve something, whatever we agree on. So let's start with the vegetation by the wall. Do we put some additional conditions on? Do we leave it what's in the resolution now?
Starting with me, I agree with what we've come up with so far to limit the pallet to the chosen pallet that Kathy came up with.
The revised plant list.
Revised plant list. And the other restriction we talked about as far as the height, which is already in the resolution, I believe.
No, the height really isn't in the resolution. The only thing that's in there right now is prevent the obstruction of the right-of-way.
Well, we did talk about adding, I believe we had some terminology that we discussed.
And we will need to get from you again the detail on which plants to eliminate. Okay. So you're okay with the revised plant list and the height of the vegetation? Okay, Bobby?
I am too.
You are?
Yes.
You are. You are, you are. Okay. So we can, we can put those in. All right. The revision of the original resolution, that seems like a no-brainer to me. This is on page five of nine of Attachment C. The very top line, we need to change two driveway cuts to one driveway cut. Just change the wording there. No, it's, it's talking about the existing driveway cut along Montgomery and one on Ojai Avenue shall be removed.
If you'll indulge me, I think that that first sentence should read, "The existing two driveway cuts along Montgomery Street and one ADA ramp curb cut on Ojai Avenue shall be removed and a curb ramp shall be installed to the satisfaction of the city engineer for consistency with the city's complete streets policy." That's my understanding. I'm hearing that's wrong.
No, when it said two, it should be one, right? One on Montgomery, one on Ojai Avenue, right?
And one ADA. Okay, I apologize. So it's, it's existing one curb cut along Montgomery Street and one driveway cut...
One driveway cut along Montgomery and one on Ojai Avenue be removed and a curb ramp installed. Those are the three in question.
That was only two. So it's existing one driveway cut along Montgomery Street and one driveway cut on Ojai Avenue and one ADA ramp curb cut on which street?
The ADA cut is on the corner.
On the corner.
That's, there's two driveway cuts to be removed and one to be added with an ADA ramp.
I wouldn't normally call it a... Ramp is, you should call it a driveway cut. Yeah, it's a ramp, yeah.
It's a ramp. So we're, we're removing two driveways and adding a ramp.
My understanding is there's three current cuts, not two.
No, there are two.
There's two existing driveway cuts, one on Montgomery, one on Ojai Avenue. Those are being removed. And the existing curb ramp will be revised to be a part of the curb extension and be compliant to current code.
In the interest of getting this right, I might suggest that the chair invite Council Mayor Wierich to the podium to comment.
Mr. Grant's right. I'm just looking at, if you look at the plans, the demolition is for two driveway cuts and one handicap ramp and the reconstruction of a new handicap ramp. That's what's in the plans.
Yes, correct.
I was just saying, let's have the condition be parallel to the plans. Okay?
I think that end state...
Which would be demolition of two driveway cuts, one handicap ramp, and then a new construction of one handicap ramp. That's what the plans say.
Right, okay.
So the previous condition said two on Montgomery. The mistake, which should have said one on Montgomery. So if we changed the wording from two to one...
And it needs to add the reference to the existing handicap ramp.
It already says the ramp in there.
It says, "And a curb ramp shall be installed to the satisfaction of the city engineer."
But it doesn't say one exists now. That's the issue. It doesn't accurately describe the existing condition. That's, I think, what needs to be revised.
Right.
So that would solve the problem.
What is that?
Oh, let me, give me one moment, then I think I'll restate it.
Sure.
Well, it's the, you know, like with Council Mayor...
I think we all know what we want the end state to be.
You want it to state what's on the plan.
Yeah.
So let's just say, I agree per plan, that we take that statement and we insert it into, the language into the resolution.
Waiting on Mr. Summers.
Okay, so as I understand it, it'd be the existing one driveway cut along Montgomery Street and one driveway cut on Ojai Avenue and one curb ramp on the corner, all as depicted on the plans, shall be removed and then the rest.
And a new curb ramp installed to the satisfaction.
Which is already there.
Yeah. Okay.
Yay.
Yay. Yes, 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 yes. Okay. So we got that. The April fourth versus within thirty days of Caltrans encroachment permit. I think that's pretty much a no-brainer. We should be doing that. That's on condition three B, okay? And then the last one, one year versus six months.
I'm okay to keep it at a year myself.
I think we should keep it. I'm happy to keep it at a year.
Okay.
Could I, could I add, I'm sorry, one more comment is that we should keep in mind if we don't finish this before the ATP project, this gets delayed, it could be a difficulty as well. I think the goal is to finish this before the ATP because we're coordinating with Caltrans to finish the ATP work first, and they're doing overlay immediately afterwards. So somehow this was enabled to be delayed. Past that, it could be a real issue. We'd end up tearing up new asphalt out there.
Well, that's another issue there.
I'm gonna rescind and go back to the six months.
Yeah, I mean, that's important, that's important. That was important information.
It's, it's six months, but we don't know when the six months clock starts either.
Right, and it could be, once again...
That's right. We don't, we don't know that.
And Greg, this is something, I guess, that, that needs to be noted in your discussions with Caltrans on the ATP, is that we have this other thing going on.
Right.
And make sure that they coordinate those two. So we have the least disruption to the street.
Right. And it'd be, and keep in mind, we're working with the applicant, you know, to try to make it accessible and try not to interrupt any big events or anything else. We're all trying to work together on that. So we have flexibility to extend it if it was necessary. We're trying to keep it moving, though.
So you're back to six months?
I'm back to six months. I know, I know how long this is gonna take. I think the applicant's gonna have plenty of time. Yeah, and plus you got Greg who is a very workable public works director, so.
So it is a semantics thing.
Six months of flexibility.
I'll go with the six.
The flexibility is there. It's a little bit more restricted. The flexibility is a little more controlled and defined, but it's there.
It's in the condition.
Yeah.
Okay. And Bobby?
Well, if you take it back to six months, I would say that maybe you write the flexibility into it.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the flexibility is there. It says unless extended by the Public Works Director and CDD for good cause.
Yeah, I'm good with six months.
And Ray?
Okay.
Okay. So we've disposed with the vegetation, the revised plant list, the revision of the original resolution, the April fourth response date, and the six-month timeline after final Caltrans encroachment permit issuance.
Chair, could I ask a question of staff real quick?
Oh, go right ahead.
Mr. Grant, could you just say again this part with the ATP? I heard you, but I didn't really hear you.
Right. There is a decent chance that with the delays in getting the final encroachment permit and depending how much time we allow to construction occur, it could overlap into the ATP project, which has other work pedestrian crosswalk improvements and bike improvements on Ojai Avenue. So if this project somehow gets extended out, if they're not being diligent or there's delays with Caltrans, then you might end up with this work occurring after the ATP. And we're working with Caltrans to overlay the street immediately after the flat work of the ATP project is complete.
The flat work, you mean what?
Flat work could be curb extensions and...
But not these curb extensions?
No, not this one, right.
Okay, other curb extensions. And then Caltrans is going to repave Ojai Avenue?
Right. They're phasing their overlay immediately after our flat work. We're coordinating those two together.
Okay.
So I mean, there could be a situation here where it develops where it gets pushed out and we end up finishing the ATP and doing the overlay, and then they come in and finish the curb extension afterwards, which would be a shame. Just it would, it wouldn't look as sharp.
And the ATP timeline is ambiguous as well.
That is...
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm understanding from your presentation you gave to council.
It's spring of two thousand twenty-one. It's two years away. So we're getting close with this, two years the way that this goes on.
I get it.
That's when they would start or when they would finish?
It's when it would start.
That's when they would start, okay.
But really, the flat work is relatively quick work. That's why I think the six month is plenty of time. The contractor to do this work, we're talking weeks, if even. It's relatively simple work, ripping up the sidewalk and pouring a curb sidewalk and a curb extension. That's not difficult. So a lot of the ATP, for instance, flat work will be quick.
Okay.
So I do have a question. Oh, go ahead.
So does this explanation change anyone's straw poll on the six month or one year?
No, because it extends, two years goes by like that. And you're gonna, there's going to be a delay. I mean, Caltrans is going to take more time than anticipated.
Chances are this, this project will turn around at Caltrans quicker than ATP will.
Yes. And then you add into it the other conditions where the flexibility is necessary, time of year, weather, you just the logistics of that and working with Greg to get it in at the right time considering where it is. I think that's, I, my sense is that we're shifting the discretion to, over to the Public Works Department so that they could control it a little bit better based on what they have on their schedule versus giving it to the applicant. That's, that's where it's going. And I think that's the appropriate way to do it here.
Thanks.
I do have a question. So is there any, what are your thoughts on, excuse me, if this doesn't work out separately ahead of time, excuse me, that, is there a way to charge the applicant for the work to be done and have the work done by the ATP contractor so it all looks alike and it looks good? And do we ever do that kind of thing?
I guess I would, we have done things like that, even in recent paving projects.
Cost of economies that might benefit the applicant, actually. I mean...
Yeah, there is, for the city, we have to do our prevailing wage and the developer can have some options on that. They might have significant savings. But we have done that kind of thing before in some of the recent paving projects. We've had private improvements lumped into our public contract if, on the request of the...
I'm just saying, if we could, you know, is that something we could think about if the separate phasing does not work out?
I think that we could, and I'm sorry, as I say that, we have a lot more flexibility on our city paving projects. The ATP grant project is, has very strict state and federal requirements on it. So I think any kind of mixing with private and federal-state funding would be complicated. It's a very, very strict grant. So in that case, I'd say it's best not to combine them.
Do you, do you anticipate any problems at this point getting this work done before ATP's overlay?
I'm, I think with these restrictions, there's a good chance it will be done quickly. I think the, they had a fairly fast cycle, surprisingly, when they recently submitted. And I think they're, they don't have that much revisions to really make on this. They might, they might be able to have this thing permitted in six months and built in a year.
Okay. Any more from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended specifically in condition three B and condition four with the revised plant list, which Commissioner Nolan will provide to the secretary, with the revision to condition five of the original resolution. And I think that's it. Oh, and the, and the condition that the vegetation not extend in height beyond the existing wall.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm, I'm saying, I think those are the conditions. Usually the chair doesn't make motions. Well, then I'll make, I'll make the motion that we do it that way.
Okay, and I'll second.
Any more discussion? Then let's have a roll call.
Jay Giallo?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. We now, we now arrive at item four. And based on the city attorney's advice, that my property being within five hundred yards, five hundred feet of the Mallory project, I am automatically in a conflict of interest. I'm gonna turn the gavel over to the vice chair.
Okay.
And I will absent myself until you're done with item four.
We'll call you back. All right, so let's move on to item four. And this is the time extension request for approval of, I'm saying this over again, my, I'm reading this, to June two thousand and nineteen of the approval of DRP eleven dash ten, TTM eleven dash zero one, and T eleven dash thirty for a thirty-unit condominium project known as the Mallory Way Bungalows located at four twelve West Mallory Way. I don't know why it says Mallory Way Street, but maybe that's just an error. Ojai, California. Assessor's parcel number is zero two zero dash zero, dash zero seven one dash three seven zero. The time extension request also includes requested amendments by the applicant and planning staff to further clarify the order that development should occur within the conditions of approval. And may we hear from staff?
Thank you, Vice Chair Nolan. The project known as Mallory Way Bungalow is before the commission to consider a three-year time extension to June twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty. Council originally approved the project as a DRP and tentative tract map on June twenty-sixth of two thousand and twelve for a three-year period, which would have expired on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. The map approval was then extended by state law for a period of twenty-four months or two years, taking that expiration date out to June twenty-sixth of two thousand and seventeen. In May of two thousand and seventeen, the applicant requested a time extension. During that time, there was a change in the Community Development Director and the position was vacated. And the time extension request was not processed by staff. That was discovered during a recent condition review and verification by staff of the time limits being met. And we reviewed the code with the attorney and determined that since no action was taken on that request, we would ask for a retroactive time extension of three years as allowed by the local code, which would extend the expiration to, like I said, June twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty. That allows approximately sixteen more months for the applicant to pursue the recordation of the final tract map. The suggested conditions of amendment were contained in Attachment C, which were amendments to Exhibit B of the City Council Resolution. Under the corrections you'll see that I provided in track changes mode. There's an order of development that is established... there's an order of development that is established that allows the applicant to obtain all the required approvals from other agencies, submit an application for building permit to demolish any structures that conflict with the recorded map prior to recordation of the final track map. We would like to change the wording. I did provide you a revised page on your, on the dais that says that the timing of such permit issuance for, will be subject to a zoning clearance by the Community Development Director upon determination that satisfactory evidence of the final map is ready to record. That meaning we've, we've gone to City Council with the final documents and we are ready to take this to the county to record, but we need to demolish those structures first. Number three is submitting the application to obtain the City Council approval for the final track map documents and map. Four is permits, such as the Public Works Department permits for public improvements and new construction of the new buildings as, is that subsection 4B. And then Condition 5, A5 says final occupancy clearance will not be issued until all the conditions have been met. There was an issue with the previous conditions of approval giving conflicting timing of what to do first. One condition said that you need to comply with all the conditions before you record a track map. And in another breath, we needed to pull building permits before recordation of track map. And then one condition also said, record the map before you do any construction. So the attempt in providing these minimal changes to the council is to clarify that, that we are going to do things in the order of development that are outlined in Conditions A 1 through 5. What is before the commission tonight is to consider these changes, consider the time, three-year time extension, and make a recommendation to City Council to approve these changes. So you would be adopting this resolution as a recommendation to City Council. And this matter would go before City Council for final approval of the time extension. With that, I have nothing further to add.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. So, do we have any leeway at all in modifying these conditions that were approved back in whenever 2012?
Yes, because we're at the time extension point, so the conditions can be adjusted within reason.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right, I'm going to open up the public comment and let's hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Josh Griffin, applicant for Cornerstone Architects, behalf of the developer. Yeah, I mean, I think we're, as long as we go through this time extension, reading through the modifications and the additions to these list of conditions, we're happy with all of them. There are a couple of points of clarification I'd like to get from staff, possibly. One is, in order, okay. Step number one in A was obtain all required approvals, e.g. Public Works and others. And then in step 4A, it says submit an application to City of Ojai Public Works Department. So I'm not sure if you're talking about two different, was there one onsite and one offsite, or?
If you read through the conditions, you're going to have to do an improvement plan and have an improvement agreement. And the condition is drafted in a way that you get those agreements in place and that you have a basic design that is agreed to.
So like, when you say obtain all required approvals, that's step number one. Is that actually all the offsite improvements and the drainage and approvals of the actual civil grading plans and all of that?
I think it, it would, because you want to get your grading and drainage plans approved as well.
So all those have to be approved, step one?
Within that 16-month window.
And then, so when it says submit an application to City of Ojai Public Works Department for required public improvements, is that a separate permit that we're applying for?
That is to actually obtain the permit itself, not just get the public...
Okay, so the first step is approvals of the plan, second step is actually pulling the permit?
Correct.
Got it. And then, from my reading of going from step A 2 to 3, step A is submitting an application for a building permit to demolish. Step 3 is approval of the final map and recording it. When does a demolition, is that, number 2 imply the demolition takes place before record, or?
Yes, the demolition will be allowed to be permitted by a zoning clearance by the Community Development Director just prior to recordation of the map. So we have all the map documents ready to record. Then the director can clear the demolition permit. That way we don't have a site that is vacant for a long period of time.
And then, so my understanding, the demolition would have to be complete before we record the final map?
If the buildings conflict with the map.
Okay, anything that conflicts with the map would have to be demolished before the final map is approved and...
Correct.
Got it. Those are my only points of clarification. Although, I mean, it's a minor thing, but there are a couple conditions in the Public Works section that were redundant. I believe, I'm looking at, this is on page 18 of 21, Attachment C. Numbers 54 and 55, I think, are partially repeated in numbers 61 and 62. Again, it's a minor point, but...
What did you say, 55 and what?
Fifty, 54 and 55.
54 and 55, okay.
And then 61 and 62. And so I would, I think we could strike 61 and 62 because they're basically repeating.
Oh, I see, so you're saying 54 is repeated in 61 and 55 and 62?
Correct.
I see.
Anything to do, you know, reduce the number of conditions would be...
I think probably the condition 62 is simpler. I think this has already been through the Complete Streets Committee previous to this, so I think we could go to 62.
Yeah, that's true.
And then 61 is very similar. So we've already reviewed this project in Complete Streets Committee, so I would think, yeah.
So then we would strike 54 and 55?
Right, and leave 61 and 62.
That's the recommendation.
Okay, I think it's a good point made there that we strike, I guess we could actually leave 54 and 55 and maybe strike and the Complete Streets Committee because it's already been reviewed there, but leave and the PC as well. So maybe that's...
If you'll indulge me, the net effect of that would be to leave in place the requirement that the improvements to Mallory Way, Summer Street, and Eucalyptus Street be approved by the Public Works Director.
Period.
Which is implied but should be stated.
All right, so basically we're saying we're going to leave 54 and 55, and we're striking the Planning Commission and Complete Streets. Am I getting this right?
I think you've got it, you're right.
And that's, and that's for both, okay, well, 54 I figure, all right, let me just get this down. Well, I generally have it, we can work on the language or...
I think you've got it, though, yeah.
Right, and so then are we leaving 61 and 62?
Then we delete 61 and 62.
Those are the two we're going to strike.
Yeah, that'd be redundant.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, good point.
Just wanted to make sure.
That's it on my end.
Strike, all right, I have to write...
Available for questions if you have them.
All right, Josh, you're doing a great job, continue.
That was it, actually.
That was it, okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have one question.
Commissioner Lottis? Go ahead.
I have a special fondness for Valley Oaks, so anytime I see talk about Valley Oaks, I, I perk up, so, let's see. There was a condition that talked about allowing rock work under, oh, gosh, where the heck was that? Give me one second. Okay. Oh, it was, it was just, I don't know what, what condition it translates to, maybe not a condition. Page 6 of 32. Attachment B says landscaping associated with Valley Oak, number 18, and coast live oak trees, number 15 and number 16, shall be restricted to non-vegetated rockscaping within the drip line of the tree. So I just know, I think, I'm not a landscape architect, so I, I don't want to speak for you. So, you know, what I know really doesn't work are lots of small rocks that just kind of fill up the drip line. And I just wondered what was intended with that, rockscaping.
Well, I, I do know that one of the conditions in here is that before anything, any grading or anything is done, there will be a qualified arborist who will review everything and make sure that everything's to the, obviously, to the benefit of all the trees. So that is a condition that's written in here.
Yeah.
I believe it's somewhere in 19.
I read this as more your landscaping plan.
And that...
The final product of what, you know, what's, are you planning to put rocks under the, under the trees? I guess I would, if you are, I would minimize it.
Well, yes, I mean, of course we're going to minimize, I mean, and that would obviously, anything we do would go in front of the arborist and we'll say, is this going to be helpful or harmful to the tree?
I'm going to make a comment. Now, this was 2012, but I was on the commission when this came through. And if I remember correctly, when they said rockscape, I know who the landscape architect was at the time, and I don't remember, he may have also been the arborist, because he was in both. I believe when he said rockscape, it was more of like placing boulders and not adding cobble to the tree. Because that's, I know that we, we see that in landscapes, but ideally it's not a good application.
If you're satisfied.
So I, I'm kind of going back into the cobwebs, but I believe that's what it was.
Vice Chair Nolan? I believe we're speaking about Original Condition 34, Bio 5B.
What page are you on?
I'm in Attachment C, I think...
New resolution.
Commissioner Lottis, Commissioner Lottis was...
Oh, you're on this one?
Yeah. Which is the next set of, it's the underlined and strike-through version. You only have one page of it in your hand, the rest of it's in your binder.
Oh, so I need to go here, over here.
Yes, it's page 14 of 21, Bio 5B. Talks about the revised landscape. It also speaks to the Valley Oak, number 18, and the coast live oak trees.
Okay.
And the work that is done within that drip line is restricted to appropriate mulching as recommended by a qualified certified arborist within the drip line of the tree.
Yeah, so I think we're good, yeah.
I think we're covered.
I think we're good.
These are mitigation matters, measures that were outlined in the Environmental Impact Report that was adopted for this project.
Okay, so we're good on it.
I just, yes, and I appreciate that.
But it's a good point.
It's been a long time ago. I mean, this project was approved in 2012, so...
Yeah, exactly.
It was really a long time ago.
But it's a good question. Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Powers?
I'm not sure I can phrase this as, yeah, I can phrase this as a question. I was not on the commission in 2012. But since 2012, we've certainly had a lot of discussion on many fronts regarding water and drought, and certainly since the Thomas Fire about building and fire, fire safety design, and now earthquake safety design. So I would be remiss and not true to myself if I didn't ask you, since 2012, has there been any revisions in the design to assure the highest fire safety in these buildings? Not just a code, but, you know, there's been a lot of community panel discussions. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of experts coming forward on how to best assure fire safety. And there's been a lot of discussion about rainwater harvesting, about swaling, about limiting hardscapes, so there's percolation back into the groundwater basin. Has there been any retooling, any redesign at all since the community has come forward so strongly? Because I'm not an advocate of business as usual when it comes to building.
Well, just like somebody who were not on the commission, we're actually not involved, our firm was not involved in the project when it was first approved. We were brought on only recently. But, you know, there are certain elements that haven't changed in terms of fire safe design, in terms of materials that need to be used, in terms of fire sprinklers have to be installed in every, every unit, and those type of things. Those are all built into the code already, so those are all being addressed. In terms of water, the entire site has, I don't want to say issues, but it has its own drainage, drainage situations and solutions that we have to come up with, that we're working on with Public Works. And so all of that has been looked at. We are, you know, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of open areas that aren't paved. You know, I'm not sure about the numbers and quantities, if we're reducing the amount of impervious surface or reducing it. But we are using a lot of impervious pavers where we can or just using natural landscape where we can. So every effort is being made to address those concerns that you're having. But most of those were addressed in the original plan as approved.
Is gray water plumbing being built into each new unit?
That actually hasn't been decided at the point. I mean, it's, I mean, you know, it's easy enough to put provision in for it.
Title 9? I heard that, Bob.
We're waiting.
Okay.
I'll make a comment on that also about the landscape, because I do remember that also when this project came through. And I will say the landscape architect who worked on the project then was actually working with me on the landscape committee here for the City of Ojai. And we were working on the, on the M. Weelo. So I know that there was, there was a fair amount of, I mean, the design was well done, low water use, oak compatible. The irrigation system, I remember, was also low volume, you know, drip for the most part. So I believe, you know, that they actually had that in mind while they were doing the design work. I mean, I know things have changed. And then, of course, you know, chapter was at 7A and the building code's going to give you everything you've got to do with fire anyway, so it's pretty spelled out there. So I think from my, what I can remember on the project, they, they actually did a really, a good job.
And I want to apologize, you know, I know, I know I've been berated in the past for going into Title 9 when we're not supposed to because our purview is land use.
But no, it's a good...
But I don't know who's talking about these things, so I, I talk about them. I'm not involved in every, you know, commission and every subject. You know, I'm concerned about fire hydrants. I'm even concerned about sprinklers on buildings because when those go off, they reduce the pressure in the fire hydrants. So is there, is there really enough flow? And I know this isn't...
The assumption is the fire department knows what they're doing and they, they give us the requirements.
And that's a whole bigger conversation that I know other people are having. But I, I'm really concerned about, you know, the building and the architecture. And I, I get that's out of our purview. But I also know that the conversation has heightened since recent events. So there's what's to fire code, and then there's what's extra for planning for the future.
Vice Chair Nolan, Commissioner Powers? Pages 3, Condition 7, that continues on through page 6. Condition 8, those are all, Attachment C.
Okay.
Those are all the fire departments' conditions of approval. And there is information about water pressure and making sure there's adequate water pressure in the hydrants, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Yes, I did read that. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? All right, then I'm going to open it up. We've got two speaker cards. I've got William Wyrick.
Mindful that's coming, this is coming to council. I'm going to ask a couple purely information questions and the city attorney will stop me if I'm inappropriate.
Questions are fine.
Okay. Has the state law, and are the municipal code to be in compliance for both the density bonus and our inclusionary zoning at all changed since conditions of adoption? Question mark. Not asking it to be answered now, it's just a question I'd like, information I'd like to see when it comes before council to have, all right? Second of all, I would hope that we would have the definitions of what the income restriction categories are. Income restrictions for affordable housing are defined in three different levels, and I don't see any specification for that. I think that might be a question that comes up, you know, when it does come before council. On the issue of which general plan this is referring to, I assume it would be the housing element of the prior cycle rather than the current cycle, since the current housing element was, was approved in December of 2012. element was approved in December of two thousand and thirteen. So, the references to the general plan here would be, at least to the housing element, would be to the prior cycle. I think, I just want to make sure if that's clear or not. And the last question I had really quick is the arborist reports are dated respectfully oh-six, oh-seven, and oh-eight. Are there any things in the professional standards for arborist practices that say it's good for so long? And I don't know the answer to that.
It's a good question.
Just a question.
I'm not aware of that, but I hear what you're saying, because trees grow, things fall down.
I'm not asking, I'm asking you, I just, these are questions, information questions I'm throwing out there, that I hope they...
Paul Rogers.
Bob Daddy? Come on up.
Good evening. Ray, thank you. I'm here on the fire hydrants. I met with Mr. Wickstrom and Mr. Flood and this engineer about six months ago on the lack of firewater in the city. We have an eight million dollar project going in with six million dollars to fund it, so this is a significant issue. When you look at page nineteen, which is the counter for twenty-three, we have lots of things in here that really need to be brought up to date. Two thousand and twelve is way too old. We start putting stipulations, and why we're putting stipulations, and then we put a final stipulation is really a waste of ink. So, we'll put in required flow of a thousand gallons a minute, twenty PSI for two hours. And then, at the very end, it'll say, all conditions of the ventura fire protection shall be met. It's kind of, kind of a little bit simpler than putting in all these designations that don't work, because things change from time to time. So, a thousand gallons, a thousand gallons, twenty PSI for two hours in that area where we have these little tinker toy, two and a half inch and four inch lines. The lines are on the city website, you can look. Finally got those things on. We have a lot of areas that really don't have good water. We have a lot of areas that have different water. A lot of conditioning in here that I'd really like to pay attention to. First of all, I'm absolutely in favor of the project. I think it was a pathetic display from our city council back in two thousand and twelve. I think it was very burdensome for the people. I thought it was a pretty pathetic display. It should have gone through then. But again, it's memorialized on city tape, and if you care to look at it, you can look at that fiasco. They should have been allowed to do it then. I think besides the water, where it'll say, you have to put in this line before construction, you have to do this, you have to do that, you've got to do the other. One of the things that I've talked to the chair about was one of the things Casitas said, very important, please, before you consider any project at all, please notify us so we get a heads up. Fire lines take a lot of time to put in, and there's considerable work to be done. It is on the Casitas website now, so you can look at Casitas website. You can see when and where they're going to put everything in. And if they have a project like this that is proposed, you know, they might be able to throw this in Kenyatta, or we already had them replace that little four-inch hobby wharf vent on Eucalyptus and down the other end of Mallory, and they added them. They upsized them from four inch to six inch, so that's significant. At that time, when we looked at it, I talked to Mr. Qualisi and said, do you understand how many lines there are between Summer Kenyatta and the foothill edge of West Eucalyptus? The answer was zero. That time, there wasn't a single hydrant in Mallory Way, okay? They went out, they looked at it, they decided that they needed to upgrade it. So, if you would condense a lot of these regulations, you can certainly make it easier on applicant, because we're about to adopt a new fire map, which may have different regulations. At the time, we didn't have an exclusion on Class C roofs. We now have an exclusion, and it's been adopted on Class C roofs. So, when we talk about green tint roofs in here, I'm not sure that they weren't sh, would jingle, I don't know what they are, but they all have to be Class C. And looking at, the last thing is looking at your restrictions on applicants for the trees. I think they're really overbearing. An evaluation was done, and I don't think anybody in this room remembers, maybe, Paul Rogers. Everybody, two people remember Paul Rogers?
Yes.
In this report, he said he did the financial evaluation on the value of the trees in two thousand and seven. So, I would hope that we've lost trees, we've lost trees all over the valley. We had that terrible day, Fourth of July, where we lost an enormous amount of oaks, and we're losing them as we get the rainwater. So, I would hope we would look at this thing. The other thing is having fifty-five foot circles, and twenty-five foot circles around any of the trees for getting in construction is going to be pretty tough to even throw a fire line in there. There's not, we have more space, different separation that's mandated, and things than they're physically available, so I think we've kind of need to look at that, and we've gone overboard. And so, Ray, I would say that when you guys are ready, if you'll send a proposal to title nine for gray water, which is legal, we'll be more than happy to add it to title nine, if we don't have to bring this up again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward? Nope? All right. Excuse me, then I'll close the public hearing, and we can discuss the item.
I'd like to follow up if I could, if it's permissible, what Mr. Daddy was saying, and maybe this is land juice. But if cisterns were built in as part, it's just a suggestion, if cisterns were put underground for rainwater harvesting, then onsite, you could add thousands and thousands and thousands of gallons for fire use. And then, we're not relying on the city, on Casitas and the fire hydrants. And I don't think a lot, enough people are thinking about that. So, I'm just putting that as an architectural element or landscaping element, since you're tearing everything up to put some cisterns in. I know one gentleman up on foothill that had an old swimming pool he's not using, and now it's an underground cistern for rainwater capture. So, I'm just going to put that idea in your heads.
There's going to be, there's going to be requirements from the fire department that are going to outline all the needs that are going to be put into place here.
I get it, and elements like that aren't often spoken about.
And it's hard to mandate a applicant to do those kinds of things.
No, that's why I make suggestions, design suggestions.
Yeah, we just talk about it. So, you know, there's a lot, lot of information in this. And personally, I think it's in a sufficient state to go to the city council for them to approve, with the changes that were talked about on pages eighteen of twenty-one and nineteen of twenty-one, and with the addition that the, the changes that the staff made. I think the process in itself will work out, work out those other nuances of the development project. So, personally, I'm in favor of making a motion to move forward, but everyone else can comment.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes, I have some more questions. Actually, because I did have the same questions as Bill Wyrick. So, where are the conditions that talk about meeting the current standard for affordable housing? And I believe in particular, you know, it used to be twenty years, you could provide affordable housing, and that was fine, and then, as we just acted on a change to the ordinance, I think it's now fifty years? Forty years?
Fifty-five is now the standard, and I'm just double checking it. In the original one, it stated that it was also fifty-five years, and if you'll bear with me to find that point.
Probably shifted on condition.
Give me a moment. It was in, it's in the existing, what is this, attachment B, page twelve, in the general plan consistency findings, finding number four states that the, and this is the two thousand and twelve resolution, that it would be fifty-five years of affordability. That finding isn't restated in attachment C, because attachment C just amends the conditions, not the findings. The net effect is that this project remains subject to fifty-five years, which is the new state standard.
Which is the current state standard.
The old standard was thirty years.
Okay. And then, what about the, I mean, is this going to be very low, moderate? Do we have any idea?
I do not know the answer to that question. I would hope staff does.
I was just looking in the file, they have an affordability agreement, and it states it's going to be very low income. Five units will be for very low income. Corrective.
Well, they're supposed to do...
I think it's...
Seven. And two units for moderate.
Oh, okay.
That would be seven.
Seven total.
Yeah, that was a seven.
For affordable housing.
Yeah.
Out of thirty.
Out of thirty, okay. Okay, so it sounds like that is covered.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I, I'm sorry, I just have one, a question of staff. So, because I wasn't here for the project, I, I know what's out there, but I don't really know too much else about it.
So, you know, no one else here has been... Neither have they.
That's true, that's true. So...
Well, some of them...
Does this project result in a conversion of rental units to condominiums?
Yes.
And so, we've never, the city has never talked about that as an issue, whether, you know, what benefits, what negatives does it have to the, to the community, I assume? So, I just want...
I believe that was part of the consideration in two thousand and twelve, but it hasn't been discussed at this stage.
So, I just would like to mark that as an issue for general plan.
And part of the next housing element cycle as well.
And then, yes, yeah. Okay, and, okay, let's see. The, this was minor, it was a matter of updating, you know, they can either plant a required ratio of replacement trees, or they can pay a fee for mitigation, but it's supposed to be based on the value of the trees, based on a report done in two thousand and seven. And I would like to somehow make a, modify that condition, which is, what is that?
What page are you on?
Eight, I'm on page twenty-two of thirty-two, attachment B. So, that would be condition eighteen.
Exhibit B, you're on exhibit B.
Exhibit B, thank you.
Well, that's the old resolution, you know that.
Oh, gosh. Well, but that's being carried forward, isn't it?
Well, you've got to go to and find out where it is, and it's easier for me to follow.
Well, let me tell you what, I, so I just am thinking that that should be updated with perhaps a tie to the CPI increase of probably twenty-five percent or so since two thousand and seven. I mean, you know, I don't want, if they choose to pay a fee, I don't want it based on something way back in two thousand and seven.
Will they be required to update that tree report anyway?
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
With evaluation?
So, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's in the condition, it's in the condition.
I, I have to admit, I'm kind of lost by...
And then, this we hadn't seen until tonight.
Yeah.
So, that's why we're kind of going a little bit back.
Yeah.
If you'll allow me, I think that's covered in both attachment C, page nine, condition eighteen, sub, nineteen, pardon me, sub C allows the fee, and then, the next one below adjusts that amount. And then, again, condition thirty-four, that speaks also to tree issues, sets it as the current fee. So, I think that's built in.
Okay, okay.
Updating it to reflect current tree values.
Okay. All right, do we have any other questions? Chester, would you like to go back to your motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion. We're going to extend, we're just making a motion, recommendation to staff, so I'll make a motion to approve the time extension, or to make the recommendation to the city council for the design review permit, DRP eleven dash ten, tentative map, TT, IT, my glasses, TTM eleven dash zero one, entry permit for an approved project for Mallory Way, bungalows project and associated drainage and public improvements for the property. With the amendments on page eighteen of twenty-one, the crossing out of planning commission and complete streets committee, and the crossing out on page nineteen of twenty-one, items number sixty-two and sixty-three, I believe it is.
Sixty-one and sixty-two.
Sixty-one and sixty-two.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Good. Any further discussion? No? All right, Sherry, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck with happening all of those items.
Okay, and then...
Can you make sure she does both of those?
Well done.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get it.
Make sure everybody gets to say what they want to say. Make clear what you're going to pass as a resolution.
I have you as a...
I just have the one.
Tutelage, tutelage.
Okay, we'll move on to number five, future agenda items. I note that the March sixth, two thousand and nineteen planning commission meeting has been canceled. We have three of the current six members are going to be at the Planning Commissioners Academy during that period. It occurred to me that if city council had already said it's a five-member commission to be reduced by attrition, that the three remaining commissioners would have constituted a quorum. Didn't have time to get that done, if that in fact is what the council eventually plans to do. Let's hear from staff. Tell us about, about the, just very briefly, about the March twentieth meeting. What's, what's going on there with the Gables?
That it will be a concept review for what is considered a dry lot subdivision, so it's the lot lines only that they're establishing. They are not doing any construction as a part of this approval request. That's basically, he's bringing forward what those lot lines are, and we have had that reviewed by Public Works, as well as fire department.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's three different things, there isn't, yes. Nine fifteen East Ojai, is that the new yoga studio?
Correct, and they have a minor revision to the frontage along Bryant Street.
Okay, that's ill-defined at the moment. I walk around there a lot.
Yeah.
It's hard to tell what's what. Okay, and the Gables? Now, the Gables is the one on the northwest corner of Montgomery and...
And Grand.
And Grand?
I believe so.
Yes.
Because there are three different...
It's the northwest corner.
...facilities around, around the intersection.
I think I should call them.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, the design guidelines, we're going to come back and start talking about...
I believe we were directed to come back...
Do you have four sets of design guidelines or thereabouts at the moment, and some of them overlap?
Correct, and the commission wanted an exhibit that would call out what those overlap areas are, and a suggestion of how to correct that.
Okay.
Then, we have our future special joint meetings listed on the tentative agenda, and items pending city council item.
And thank you very much for now listing in hard copy when we have our joint meetings with the city council, so that we can, in fact, prepare appropriately. I see on the next page here, twelve oh-two, East Ojai Avenue, that's the old bowling alley property?
Correct, and to date, it is still a pending project. We're waiting for them to resubmit.
This is the one that we've seen? And pending City Council and recommended by City Council to review. Oh, and we're going to, we're going to come back and talk about fences, hedges, and walls and screening again in April. Okay?
Oh, my.
Coming up.
About beating a dead horse. Okay? And then, Title X code cleanup. Good. And once we get stuff, everything done that the City Council wants us to do, then we have discussion items suggested by the commission. Great. Okay? Any questions of staff on future items? All right, let's move on to item six, and I must begin by apologizing. I attended the February 12 City Council meeting. I took extensive notes. I don't have them with me.
Next time.
I will report to you on March 20, I guess.
And it's on YouTube.
And it's on YouTube, that's true. It's always appealed to me that it's more efficient to spend five or 10 minutes one time talking about it than for each of us staff to spend, God, what was it? I think
Five hours.
Five thirty or 11:30, including the special.
You had a special session at 5, yeah.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, okay.
Five thirty-six and then 7.
Oh, there were two special meetings before, yes. I remember wrapping up around 11 o'clock.
Roughly.
So.
You want to discuss
I don't know that each commissioner wants to go watch four hours' worth of City Council machinations, but
You want to discuss the planning commission implications of the meeting? Do you remember them?
I, my mind has gone blank on it.
My question, you can
Maybe Mr. Wirick can, can take care of that for us. There are no other reports at PC meetings before March 20. Actually, the February 26 City Council meeting, that is Commissioner Corbin's assignment, will be a report back on March 20 now rather than March 6 because of the March 6 meeting being canceled. And that sounds like it's it. All right. Then, we come to the best part of the show. Our council member.
Right, when everyone wants to go home.
VA is on, oh, it's only 8:30.
Oh, oh.
Gosh, we hardly got started.
A couple of things, just, you know, again, thank you for all the time you put into sometimes very tedious issues. Our antenna, every one of our council members' antenna is up really high, really sensitive to what's coming out of the governor's office about housing. And that's something, I don't know if you might have watched the news, but I believe it was 49 cities got special invitations from the governor to meet them in a private meeting down in Long Beach last week.
Were we one?
No. That, we don't want to be on that list.
No, I'm sure not.
Okay. Two cities in Ventura County were on that list. One city has been sued by Housing and Community Development for a non-compliant housing element. And the point I'm trying to make is that if you've watched some of the quotes coming out of the governor's office, and the governor himself had a press conference after this meeting in Long Beach, he made it very clear. He says, "I respect local discretion, but you still got to perform." I think that's a summary of his position.
All right. The one that got sued was Huntington Beach, for what it's worth.
Yeah, well, I, you said it, I did.
Not surprising, given publicly available information.
So, the point I'm trying to make is that what many of us have been trying to call attention to for some time is even more pronounced now, namely, that the pressure from state government is going to continue to ratchet up in terms of performing with respect to available, affordable housing, whether that's by fulfilling, and, and I think the pressure, and Mr. Summers and Suzanne, you correct me if I'm wrong, the pressure's going to go beyond just making sites available. It's going to go into showing production. That's, that's the new step.
We expect that, yeah.
All right.
How much is open question.
How much is, you know, yeah. So, we're going to be very careful, and, you know, council's made it very clear to the staff that we want to make sure that we don't get tagged with an unreasonable arena number, that we, you know, engage, scag on the, on the arena numbers to make sure they're realistic for us. So, that's one end of the spectrum. And the other is that we look at how we can, within the character of our community, find a way to perform, because the price of not performing may well be taking away our local discretion and our local ability to protect our character. That's my interpretation of the direction we're going. I could be wrong. It's my opinion. All right. The other matter, and again, you guys, Suzanne, or Matt, if you want to weigh in on whether I'm, that seems to be a summary of your perspective from your professional point of view, I, or contest that point of view, that's my point of view.
No, I think that's a fairly good assessment of what Newsom has telegraphed that he intends to do, both by his actions and his comments. The other thing he's even commented to go so far in portions of his comments related to the budget, to look at how to tie transportation funding from the state
Yes.
To arena production.
Right.
Which would be a radical change in existing law, probably subject to challenge and certainly of concern.
You lose, you lose road funds if you don't.
Did we reuse some of the high-speed rail funds?
Yes.
I don't know if anybody saw the cartoon
Yeah.
Editorial cartoon in the Star this week. I thought it was
Now, there is some move to do the carrot and the stick, where you go, you have a fund to help cities do performance in terms of affordable housing production, along with the stick, if you don't, we're going to take, you know, away. We don't know how this is going to wash out, but I can tell you that I personally, and I think the council's going to take up at the next meeting, for example, the extension of the compliance program, because to the extent that we're talking about units that are still sitting there, built, occupied, and not permitted, and given that the sanitary district apparently has decided, after 13 months of a moratorium, they want to get in compliance with state law with respect to the capacity fee issue, it's time, I think, to kind of look at, jump-starting that program again. And again, that's arena number that counts, everyone that, of those that we can permit without building anything new.
It doesn't change the character of the community because the stuff's already there.
It's sort of a health and safety improvement.
Yeah.
Okay? So, I just wanted to share all this with you because it's definitely a land use issue. And, you know, we're going to have to find a way to produce, I believe, and I think infill is a better way to production than monolithic, large-scale, multi-story developments. Personally, that's my preference in terms of the character of Ojai. So, that's, you know, I just, I just kind of wanted to bring that up and, and call some attention to it. All right. In an interesting way, that's related to the issue of the Chaparral School property. We are, as a council, requesting that we try to move toward a joint session with the school board and the City Council, public meeting, everybody invited, try to think about a format of trying to promote, if you will, community visioning, our collaborative discussion. And I think there's a lot of people looking at that. Our council is on record of asking if, you know, we can see about making that happen. And so, I believe the, so the city, this is all in a public meeting, we discussed this.
Be useful, yeah, that would be useful.
So, you know, those are, those are two things that are coming, and I, I don't know the school board's schedule, but nevertheless, when you're looking at that eight acre, those eight acres, you're looking at the situation with the housing at the state level. It all gets mixed in together, and we have to find a way to navigate it for our community's interests. So, I just thought I'd bring up those two points of concern and interest that I have I wanted to share with you. Yes.
If I recall, because I think I filmed it, wasn't there a community visioning meeting
There was.
A couple of years ago at the Arts Center?
Yes. And that was, there was. And that was done by, I believe, council person, Francina and myself.
Okay.
I think that's the one you're talking about.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, I filmed it.
Right.
It's somewhere.
We had, we had some school board members in attendance.
Yes.
But it, it, it didn't, and, and part of that's my fault, I just get overwhelmed frankly with things to do. And there wasn't really a consolidation and, but I think what it demonstrated is a great level of public interest, of community interest. And going through a community visioning exercise, and I really think that's, would be well-advised for the school board and the City Council to think about how to collaborate on that, recognizing the school board's needs, but also recognizing that it has to be done within the, the character of Ojai, you know. I have, I, I have, you know, dreams at night, and one of the things I would love is for the community to come together at some point in the future and reestablish the original city beautiful tower configuration, which was to bookend downtown with two towers, one at the Chaparral School, the other at the museum, and with the center of the post office. The original vision, the city beautiful vision was three towers. I think it'd be fabulous to someday bring that back, but the community would have to pay for it. Can't ask the school board to do that. They tore it down, you know, for a lack of depth, for lack of, lack of ability to maintain it properly. But I just think that, you know, in this second hundred years of our community, since we reinvented ourselves in 1917, it's best to kind of think back and look forward on an extended time horizon, rather than just trying to get through the next day or the next housing element update or whatever, you know. So, anyway, thank you again for your time.
Could I ask you another quick question?
Okay, sure.
Because I was trying to jog my memory on the, on the motion that Bobby asked about regarding the reduction from seven to five, because you, you presented a motion at council last time regarding the reduction in number of seats.
I was wondering if I was going to get out of here without having talked about that.
Well, sorry, Bobby brought it up, and I can't, couldn't remember, but I know there was a motion.
Yes, I offered the suggestion that we reflect what the voters have stated with respect to the, having a mayor with a two-year term, and also reflect the fact that we're going to districting, and what would be the best way of reflecting, certainly, you know, arguably, the most consequential commission in terms of the ability to, you know, establish entitlements.
Effect life in the city.
You know, and whether or not there's, there's, we can redesign the planning commission to, to
Reflect the districts?
Not, well, not necessarily reflect the districts, but to, I think the mayor actually said it very well. You know, if there's one commission that should reflect the will of the voters as reflected in who they vote for City Council, this would be the commission, to make sure there's as close a alignment as possible between the sensibilities of the council and the sensibilities of this commission. That was, I'm paraphrasing the mayor in his statement. So, that's what we're thinking about. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to bring up anything here? Seeing
One indulgence, I'd like to introduce a colleague of mine who you'll have noticed, Alex Kiergosian, who works with my law firm and is my backup, and when I can't be in all places at once, which we still haven't figured out how to do that, he'll also cover these meetings as needed. There's no current, I don't, I'm not, not planning to miss next meeting.
Anticipated absence.
But I can't be everywhere at once, and so Alex is that, is that, he's done a number of projects for Ojai behind the scenes, and I wanted to add the face to the emails, and certainly, the council members are familiar with his emails. So, that's Alex Kiergosian. Thank you.
Welcome, Alex.
I want to add something. We've already been made aware, the council has the, how thorough and complete some of his research on some issues has been, so we really appreciate that.
Very good.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All that said, meetings adjourned.